Call to order. I'd like to get Ms. Nanette Cook to say a prayer and Councilman Nakand, Pledge of Allegion, invocation by Ms. Cook.
God, as we gather today at this meeting, we ask that you be, that we ask that you will be in our midst. Help us to make decisions that will be pleasing to you. Help us to be able to discuss the matters of hand in a reasonable way and be willing to give up having our own way. God, let this meeting be productive and as should be in case in all areas of our lives. Help us to keep you at the forefront of our minds as we do the work set before us. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Cook, and thank you, Mr. Nakand. We welcome you to the Lafayette City Council Meeting. As Presiding Officer and Chair, I would like to announce the following. This is a public hearing. To address the council on any item on this agenda, please fill out the request form and submit it to the clerk prior to the call of the agenda item, or you would not be given the opportunity to speak. Staff assistant is available if needed. Item for submission to the council should be handed to the council clerk, Ms. Veronica Williams, seated to my left in the middle. When addressing the council, state your name and title for the official record. The five-minute rule will be in effect. No debating or confrontational statements will be allowed. The front row to my left is for media only. Food and drinks are not allowed in the auditorium. Please silence all phones and electronic devices. Meeting procedures are by resolution and not by robed rules of order. All documents with reference to meetings can be found on the LCG website. And finally, the council encourages your involvement in boards or commissions. If interested, call 291-8800. That's 291-8800. Chair announcement. Announcement. Item number five has been deferred per legal request. Item number nine and number 10, CR-27-2020 and CR-028-2020, Restoration Tax Abatement Applications are being deferred indefinitely to allow for more accurate numbers to be submitted. Item number 11, Discussion of Recycling Contamination is being deferred to the August 4th City Council Meeting per author's request. Item number 13, CO-058-2020, Adjustments to Fiscal Year 1920 Budget. Finance has proposed an amendment revising the deletion list of vacant positions. Item number 17, CO-062-2020, Adjustments to the Fiscal Year 1920 Budget for LUS Fiber. Finance has proposed an amendment adjusting the submitting budget revision. Item number 19, CO-64-2020, Short-Term Rentals is being deferred to the September 1st 2020 City Council Meeting to allow for additional review time. For those tuning in from home or other locations, call 291-8428. 291-8428, if you wish to speak. Please keep in mind that there is a delay when viewing on TV and VI, the Internet. Okay, it's my, I like to have, I have a couple announcements I'd like to make to my, to the audience and the people that's here and on television. There was an article that went on the paper, I don't know if it was yesterday or today, but I noticed it today. It was stating that when the Lespie Motel, right now, if you pass by the Full Corn area, you'll see that the Lespie Motel has been demolished. And it is gone, like someone said. Back in last year sometime, I can't remember exactly the time, that the council, the previous council, we passed an ordinance, ordinance that we would lend $1.5 million, and all these funds came from University Avenue. But what the article is saying, that the money is $500,000 come from Hyman Center. But this year, with the new council, we, what happened, the finance department let us, told us that we could not use that money in that particular way. But I like to tell everyone that $500,000 was re-dedicated to the Hyman Center. It was just the way the money was allocated. Certain funds that you cannot beat when it's capital, out of money. So the money is in Hyman Park account. The money came from there, but it was reimbursed through University Avenue. Again, I'd like to repeat, the money is in that account for Hyman Park. The money was re-put into, and it comes from University Avenue. Okay, so I hope everyone understands that. I think I have one more announcement. Okay, tonight, you guys heard that, I'm sorry, say it again? Hyman Park. So the money came from Hyman Park, but it was re-put back into Hyman Park from University's Corridor Initiative. If you guys had been here for the last meetings, we had today, the parish meeting, it's also the joint meeting with parish and city. I want you guys to know that, I think you all know by now, that it's not a vote tonight. It was only the discussion. It was not on the agenda, just like now, it is not on the agenda for closing these recreation center. It's just public comment, and public comment is, anyone can come in on the second council meeting and speak about anything that is not on the agenda. It's no vote tonight concerning that. This was a dialogue, like Mayor President saying, hey, the conversation is starting. I want to reiterate that no vote is being cast tonight. Okay, let's see, that announcement be. I'm gonna give the floor to Mr. Lazar.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and once again, good evening, everyone. I wasn't here at the beginning of the meeting and was in the back, but my intentions at the beginning of the meeting was that we would take a brief moment of silence in memory of a great civil rights icon that we lost several days ago. Congressman John Lewis was one of the original freedom riders back in 1961. Had the honor and opportunity to hear Congressman Lewis speak on several occasions, and had the opportunity to meet him at the 20th Anniversary March on Washington, when myself, Bishop John Milton, and 32 other students from USL had the honor and opportunity to attend the 20th Anniversary of March on, 1963 March on Washington in 1983. So, just want to, just wanted to recognize the tireless efforts that he has put forth over the last 60 years or so. Worked until the last day, and it's especially important in the times that we're in. He was involved in a lot of different causes, but the thing that was always the most dearest to his heart was voting. And it's important, especially during the times that we're in, where there are efforts all over the place to roll back the advancements that we've made and to suppress the vote. So to everyone within the sound of my voice, if you're not registered to vote, please do so. If you haven't voted in the last two major elections, your name may have been stricken from the rolls. So please check. This election coming up in November will probably be the most important election of this generation. If you've moved to change your address, double-check to make sure that you're still eligible. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lazar. Speaking about voting, as Mr. Lazar has mentioned that, please go out and register the vote. And also, the previous two meetings we had today, we talked about early voting location. If you guys missed it, I just want you guys to know that we are working on a early voting location at the King Center for this election coming up, which is a very, very important election. So again, we are working on that and with the help of the Mayor President, Josh Gilery, to make sure this happens, because without him, it will not happen. So I just want everybody to know that, he's been taking a lot of beating today, but there's something good happening out of this. He's assuring me that he will help us get this location. So again, it's not all bad news, so there's something good right there. Again, this will be for this coming election, an early voting location at the King Center that should be happening next. Okay. Any council, more, any more council announcements? I see there's none. Mr. Mayor, your report, please.
Continued hard work for your respective districts in our great city. Councilman, or Mr. Chair, I am quite confident we're gonna get the MLK Center for early voting, and I'm gonna tell you, it's, we found out together that it's not as easy to get an early voting site. We can't just say, get one, because we wanted it for the July one. But I feel pretty confident, I have our CFO back there giving me North and South, so that's good, that's a yes. So we're good working with, but also the Secretary of State needs a lot of credit, too, because he, you know, he's gonna help us with that secure line to get in. But anyway, it's long overdue, long overdue, and we're gonna make it happen. So I appreciate your leadership and your teamwork in that, too. Nothing much, actually, nothing else on the executive report, and I'll defer to the council on further discussion.
There's none. Okay, item number five is going to be deferred to executive session. So let's move on to item number six, comments from the public. Comments from the public on any other matters not on the agenda. Ms. Veronica, do we have any? You do have a few? Okay. Okay, announcement. This is a time to speak about topics to the city of Lafayette that are not included as agenda items. No debating or confrontational statements will be allowed. For efficiency and to allow everyone the opportunity to speak, questions should be submitted and written to the clerk of the council. You may, you have many waiting for tonight's meeting, so you are reminded, the five-minute rules are in effect. Again, I want to make sure that this meeting is really controllable. Everyone wants their five-minute time to speak. So we will give you the five-minute time to speak. Please respect us. When the time goes off, please stop speaking so the next person can speak. And you can tell right now, it's 11:30. Some of, I know a lot of more people want to speak, but what happened, time got on. But again, we want to hear everyone's comment, everyone's comment. So please respect everyone. Again, no confrontational statements and no debating, and that's how we can stop the debating, is by people coming back and forth. So that's, I want to hear everybody, all council members wants to hear what you guys have to say. So please, let's respect everyone, and we're gonna respect you guys as well. Okay, Ms. Williams, call for the comments.
So this time, council members, I'd like for you all to listen to me speak to the mayor.
Okay.
Now, Mayor, many people have commented about your smirking. Now, Dr. King once said that the reason he was pushing for integration was that if people get to know each other, they get to, and understand that character, then they don't judge each other. So in that, I've worked with the mayor as a lawyer, he's a lawyer, I'm a lawyer, Glenn's a lawyer, and I, he always smirks. So I'm not sure if he, but I want you to know that I also graduated from U L in marketing. And as our mayor, perception is nine-tenths. So they really need to know that you're not just throwing them away. Secondly, I heard all these Army guys coming up here today. Today, right now, you're listening to a Marine. All right? You all heard the mayor and his command voice, that the buck stops here, I heard, that's his leadership, that's fine. I expect the council to have a leadership style, too, and that's why I was a little surprised when I saw three to seven on the vote to enter the budget introduction stuff, because the way politics works, if it's adversarial, then you got to fight. And I remember the days of Fuzzy and Chris Williams on the council, and every time something came up to vote, it was seven to two. Two blacks, seven whites. And I'm saying, I was in this council room every single meeting, because it was just ridiculous. And I'm praying, and I hadn't been here in a long time, because I was like, thank God, that's all, them people are gone, all of them. And I'm hoping, again, that with this new government, that we don't return. Now, my friend, you can impact this situation tremendously. You're making bold moves, and you're very stern with what you want. And I understand your political position of live within your means. But in governance, the leaders are not leaders if you got no followers. If all you got is confrontation, then, I remember back in the day, Lafayette was, people were, people were laughing at it all over the country with the racial bigotry. Chris Williams was charged with a crime for writing on the deas. They wanted to push for him to have a felony, because he wrote, all we were trying to do was get a sign up, say Martin Luther King Street, Martin Luther King changed will to Martin Luther King, and the racial tension was so thick and tight. This is what tonight reminds me of. And it's my prayer that we don't go back there, because I'm saying to you, and the reason I stand up for the third time, and it really only gives me 15 minutes, but I've been here for like 15 hours, it seems. But the reason I stand up is because I'm saying to this council that, because I'm at every speak, I'm at every Black Lives Matter rally in this community, whether it's in St. Martinville, Ville Platte, Abbeville, I don't care, I'm at all of them, because those young people invite me to go. Most of them are white. The Lafayette rallies, at the DeRoy Park, because they want to see something different. Many of them believe that we can live in that society that Dr. King had a dream about. And I'm saying to you, this is more than about the park system. And what our people need to know is that the people who are running our government, we shouldn't have to have a black person that we didn't elect as the mayor. You're the mayor of all of us. And some people say to me, when I ever have my biracial groups, they say to me, well, John, what y'all gonna do about the blacks shooting in? Well, I'm like, why is it me? I'm not the mayor. I'm not the chief of police. Where, they would say, where's the black leadership? Well, we can't get elected, we only have three seats. You know, sub-districts. Even for judgeship, they got black judgeships. If we don't have them, targeted, where we have to put extra black people in there, that's it. So the question is, when people are in leadership, such as where you guys are, mayor and council, are you gonna do what's right? I'm telling you, just listen to my words and discern my heart. Please consider the small requests of this community. Time is up. Thank you.
Marja Brusor. Marja's still here? Oh, yes, she's here.
Yes.
And after Marja is Devon Norman.
Right.
Oh, she passes.
Yes.
Okay. Devon Norman, and followed by Herb Green.
All right. It's the last time I'm gonna see y'all tonight. Let me just say, this has been a very, I know some people may think that it's been tough, but it's been a very liberating experience to see this happen on tonight, and only because I really know if my judgments are true about our leadership after tonight, based upon the reactions of the public. I want to say that I'm 25 years old, but through life experience and the way life just so happened for me, I was a child who was kind of weird, and I wanted to become involved in the funeral industry. So I started off at a local funeral home here in the city of Lafayette, thankful to my bishop, who is Bishop Gatlin, at Gassini Church of God in Christ. I don't, you know, I'm a community activist, of course, and I do represent our community affairs. However, we don't necessarily have to agree on everything in order for us to know that we agree for the betterment of the people. And I was able to work at a funeral home through them. Then I moved on to the city of Baton Rouge, which is our capital, and I worked for, which is the biggest corporation, funeral home corporation in the United States, arguably North America, SCI. I was able to spearhead a program, basically, where we were trying to debunk the idea that only white embalmers could embalm white people, and black embalmers could embalm black people. Believe it or not, in the South, the funeral industry is still very much segregated. And that is a mentality that people have. Even if you go to Martin and Castile Funeral Home, look at their obitu, look at the website, you'll see a white person, white person, white person, white person in the obituary. Oh, there might be a black person, but that's it. You look up Kenchin Funeral Home, most of them are black. That happens still till this day. And so I spearheaded a program where we were able to change that idea, and I was able to get a number of families to come over to our funeral home. And now I'm working for this corporation, and I'm doing all of this, and at the same time, I'm meeting with families who otherwise, had I not been in the position to help them pre-arrange their funerals, because I sell insurance, and I was doing pre-arranged funerals, where had I not been in that position, otherwise, I would have maybe never gone into their homes. They would have maybe never understood or wanted to have a conversation with me about the injustices that we face as black people. I can attest to this one lady who is definitely a Republican, Pentecostal like I am, and she would always tell me about how much she loved Donald Trump. And this is gonna be my last time bringing him up when I address you all, but I just want to make it very clear that as a minister of the gospel, and as someone who loves God very much, integrity means everything. And I learned that at my old job. Unfortunately, I was not able to stay, because I felt that there was much need here in the city, so I resigned, and I won't go into much more detail other than that. But I did resign, and I came back home to fight for this community. And so I would like to just leave you all with the fact that if I'm expected to have a level of integrity that goes beyond my own personal beliefs, that sometimes it makes me have to look into the perception or the map or the mindset of someone else based upon their life experiences and what may have happened to them, I would not only expect, but require that from our leadership. And so when we talk about the passion that we have for this community, it's not just about black and brown people, it's about us coming together as one. And someday, hopefully soon, sooner than later, we can have a unified city, and we won't have to have the North Side and the South Side. And we won't have to have conversations about, well, why are you closing down parks on our side? And the conversation will really be, well, let's get into some of this stuff, the discriminatory actions that happen. And I'm not saying it's because somebody is the mayor president, or somebody is the councilwoman or councilman, and another person isn't. It's the system that has been built a long time ago that was against us, and it takes all of us to tear down this system. It doesn't take just black people, it doesn't take just members of the NAACP, it doesn't take just black elected officials, it takes white elected officials, it takes Republican leaders, it takes Republicans and Democrats, because I'm just as harsh on established Democrats as I am on Republicans. I'm not gonna tell y'all what my political affiliation is. So I believe that we have a duty to our people to come together despite those differences, and ultimately, that's what my goal is. My goal is to do what I did in Baton Rouge, and to make those connections with people that I otherwise thought I couldn't, but to make them understand, and to hopefully understand, that together is the only way we can win. Thank you.
Third, Green.
He's gone.
He's gone. Matthew Sais, he's gone. Wallace Senegal.
He's gone.
Followed by Khadijah Rashad, we'll follow him.
Good evening again to the Mayor President, to the council. I guess you could say, right now, it's past my bedtime, and I hope I didn't, I don't fall asleep up here. But my thing is, right now, and I'm gonna keep bringing it up for every council meeting until we could get it on the agenda, or we could have a more open discussion about it, our elected chief of police. You know, I think we should have a dialogue trying to get an elected chief of police. All our municipality have elected chief of police. We got elected sheriff, elected marshal, so why can't we have elected city police? I think that would be very good for the city of Lafayette. You know, I heard a lot of things talked about. I brought my Bible up here, and it says, "The American Patriot Bible." And I guess y'all can see, it do be getting used. And look what I find in it. Dr. King is in it. And then you turn on the next page, you got former President Barack Obama in it. So that should be very patriotic to all of us, you know? I'm not saying everybody got to get a Bible like mine, but I think if we're gonna be patriot to the American flag, like we all want to raise our hand and, you know, salute the flag, we should be trying to have justice for all. We should all work towards justice for all. And we all heard what's going on right now, early acts about taking the name Cajun off the Cajun Dome, make it the Lafayette Civic Center like it originally was, because we're not all Cajun, you know? On my birth certificate, it says I'm colored, not Cajun. I'm colored. What color I am? Black in my heart, and got brown skin, you know? So these are the things that we should work on, try to be united for everyone. Lady was up here tonight talking about the difference in the South Side and the North Side, the East Side, the West Side. Let's just become Lafayette. Lafayette is a great place to be, only if we make it great, and more people might want to come and party here more than what they done. and more people might wanna come and party here more than what they done today. Thank you, guys. Y'all have a good night.
Janice Green. Followed by Takuna Elshabaz.
Good evening. My name is Janice Green and I just would like to read what I read to the parish earlier. My name is Janice Green and I am a descendant of enslaved black and African ancestors. I stand before this council just tonight to say, "Once you accept truth, then and only then, real change and healing will begin." I want to publicly share my personal struggles with the thoughts of having to accept the psychological damage of what 400 years has done to an oppressed black people here in America. Because of the miseducation I received and my lack of true self-knowledge, I struggled with life challenges and lived daily with the remnants of the past. I've heard so many times that we are all one human race. I agree, we certainly are all humans, but if we were all one race, we would all be afforded the same freedom, justice, and equality. Most do not and cannot accept any statements that do not confirm what they presently believe, even if the beliefs they presently hold to be true are based on false information and are inconsistent with reality. With all the senseless killings of black men, women, and children, I see it fitting for me to read an excerpt from a book titled "From Niggas to Gods" by Akil. Yes, the title sounds harsh, but what a read it is. "America is finished with her slaves and she never intended on letting them go free for fear that they would one day rise and retaliate. She has no more use for her slaves and she never wanted them to be used again by any other nation and definitely not to be used nor used for themselves. Her slaves are no longer a usable resource, but rather a problematic burden to her. She is finished with your black bodies. She now wants to dump her human waste, you and all your family, into a mass grave of death, as if you never existed. But how can she dump you or kill you without the whole world retaliating against her, therefore losing her delicate political control over the world? How can she do this without looking like the devil savage beast that she is and has always been? She will craft you to appear as the devil savage beast. She will take you like clay between her fingers and make you into a savage nigger beast. She will make shape, manipulate, and manufacture your wasted mind into an uncivilized, wild, ignorant, violent, murderous, threatening, animalistic, savage beast of a human being. Then, then she will feel justified to catch you, kill you, cage you, catch that beast, kill that beast, cage that beast. America has courageously saved the world from the savage nigger beast. She wants the world to applaud your murder. And damn, is you falling for the trap or what? I said, "Are you falling for the trap or what?" Black man, the setup before the murder. Extermination of the black male, the assassination of God. Remember, the formula for a public assassination is always this. The character assassination always precedes the physical assassination. Never forget that. In conclusion, as a constituent of the black community, in my efforts of brought into proper knowledge of self as a proud black African woman, I am not anti-Cajun, but un-Cajun. Therefore, I cannot and will not relate to the Cajun Creole Acadian context and appreciate myself as the black queen that I am. I denounce any meaningful relationship between Cajun, Creole, Acadiana because my history tells me that I have a black, beautiful African culture that I accept and magnify every day. I know now that Cajun and nigger are twin slurs. Black I am, Cajun Creole I am not. By the book by Takuna Elshabaz. I'll leave you with a couple of noteworthy quotes by Dr. King. "Nothing in the world is more dangerous than sincere ignorance and conscientious stupidity. The time is always right to do what is right." One more thing. And in the words of the late Congressman John Lewis, I heard him say, "Find a way to get in the way. I'm finding my way to get in the way." And anybody that's not on the platform based on moral principles and humanity needs to get out the way. Thank you.
Next speaker, Takuna Elshabaz, followed by Forrest Shasson Senior.
Well, it's certain it was a marathon today. Good evening and for those who have ears to hear, Assalamu alaikum. I am Takuna Malan Elshabaz, president and founder of CCBE, Conscientious Council of Black Elders, and the author of the book, "Black I Am, Cajun Creole I Am Not." Also, I'm the outreach minister for Imani Temple Number 49 here in Lafayette. I listened to a lot today and I want to emphasize something that much of us touched on that spoke today, but I'm not sure that all the connections were made. But on the point I wish to make, I want to make clear that any group of people that do not embrace the truth of their history and culture are easily exploited by an oppressor and will automatically give birth to their own political, social, financial, educational, and spiritual dilemma compounded with an unclear path for real solution. A truthful knowledge of self is a prerequisite for acquiring freedom, justice, and equality. The reckless and selfish promotion of Cajun Acadiana by design solidifies the racist agenda to reduce black people in southwest Louisiana, particularly in the city of Lafayette, to perceive themselves as non-essential, a powerless population undeserving of respect and self-determination. The mislabeling of black people as Creole only exacerbates the confusion and division between black individuals who have been misinformed or lack the knowledge of their true history. Creolism further diminishes the desire in black children to pursue essential black history studies. The hard truth is, Creole does not rock. The black community in southwest Louisiana are living in a system of cultural apartheid under the mislabeling of Cajun Acadiana and Creole. Not to know this is to waste time pursuing faulty strategies to achieve true freedom, justice, and equality. The recent press conference by mayor-president of this council, which we heard his name a lot tonight, Mr. Josh Gilery, and stating his intent to close four recreational centers on the north side of Lafayette in predominantly black communities and none on the south side in predominantly white communities speak clearly to my words. This proposal is being made in spite of the potential negative impact on black youth, uh, on the black youth population on the north side. It appears as though this government body does not seem to care about the collective interests of black people. In fact, the mayor-president does not even get, did not even give the black council members the respect and the professional courtesy to dialogue with them regarding his intention prior to 15 minutes before the press conference. Obviously, the black council members are considered non-essential as well. What should the black community respond be? Commit to self-determination and invest in ourselves. Strive to develop our community based on the truth of black and African history. Divest economically and culturally in the promotion of Cajun Acadiana in the black community. Do not do business with black people that do not respect or do business with you. Redirect new black recruits away from UL. Those black athletes that are already here should be encouraged to not, to not play if they are called Cajun. If UL black athletes can say that they are not niggas, then they should not reject, they should be, also reject being called Cajun. Historically, they are both racial slurs. If UL black athletes are raging Cajuns, then black birds or white doves. Encourage the UL black athletes to stand courageously following the footsteps of Colin Kaepernick, LeBron James, and Muhammad Ali and the like. The calling for the removal of historical racist stature and other racist symbol is a righteous thing, but that is not enough. That's only symbolism over substance. To pick a few rotten apples off an apple tree without treating the root of the tree, then I'm sure you can expect that there will be more apples produced by that tree. Keep fighting against taxation without representation and black culture genocided by any means necessary. But stop expecting your oppressors to do what you can't, what you can do and organize for yourself. Freedom is not free. Black I am, Cajun Creole I am not. Thank you.
Forrest Shasson Senior and Tara Laxey, is she still here? Leroy Barrington.
He's gone.
Following Mr. Shasson, Andrew Abear.
Good evening. I would like to reiterate my concerns I shared with the parish council earlier, with the city council tonight. I'm here tonight to share my concerns and not only mine's, but the concerns of the majority of the black communities as it relates to the mascot of UL, the raging Cajun. This unjust renaming of the mascot of UL, Rage and Cajun, was and is a slap in the face of black people knowing the historical connotation of that name. To add insult to injury, it was done all at the expense of the taxpayers. That's immoral and also a violation of the public trust. The name Cajun is not inclusive. To the contrary, it is exclusive to any other culture indigenous groups of people in Lafayette and southwest Louisiana. UL is a tax-funded public institution, unlike Notre Dame Fighting Irish, which is a private Catholic institution funded by the diocese and student tuition. Those of the Cajun persuasion have somehow, have somehow falsely convinced themselves at the expense of the taxpayers that it is okay to foster and promote Cajun culture on the backs of the public. This is a classic definition of usurping one's will over the will of others, namely African-Americans. The Acadian Cajuns have seized our cuisine, which include gumbo, a national, a national dish of African origin, rice dressing, which we used to call dirty rice, boudin, heart crackling, smothered gravy, just to name a few and the list goes on. These cuisines African-Americans were cooking over 100 years before the arrival of the exiled Acadians from Nova Scotia, formerly Acadia, in 1755. I can remember when Randalls, who owned and ran a restaurant every summer, would go to Nova Scotia and introduce our cuisine to the Nova Scotians. I thought to myself, the Acadian Cajuns are going back to the very same country they were deported from to introduce our cuisine. That is confirmation that Louisiana cuisine is not of Cajun origin. It would be like Mexican who live in Texas tried to introduce tacos to Mexico. In closing, we need to resolve this issue because it is a moral, because it is the moral thing to do. We need to resolve this issue because the term Cajun is not inclusive. We need to resolve this issue because it is taxation without representation. No one has to lose for someone else to win. Neither one of us, neither one of our culture is deficient. God just created us different and that is the beauty of His creation. So, let's do what we know in our hearts to do right and that is to rename the mascot of UL with a name that would encompass, represent, and inclusive to all of southwest Louisiana and Lafayette, of course. Thank you.
Andrew Abear, followed by Corey Livier.
I want you to see my smile.
Five minutes.
Thank you, Pat. My name's Andrew Abear. I'm glad to see that the vacancy of the Lafayette City Council has been filled. The next goal is to have a mayor. And the Home Rule Charter specifies how to get the mayor. In fact, it says upon vacancy, the mayor, the president of the council shall serve as acting mayor. Mr. Lewis, let me be the first to congratulate you for being the minority mayor of the city of Lafayette.
Thank you.
You see, because the charter clearly states it, that is, all charters are to be adopted. In the 1970s, the city of Lafayette adopted a Home Rule Charter by the vote of the people of the city of Lafayette. The people of the city of Lafayette have never voted to amend or repeal this charter, Home Rule Charter, which is required by the state constitution. In fact, we're talking about ducks. This is a decoy. The Consolidated Council Charter is a decoy because the people of the parish voted for this charter. The people of the parish amended this charter. The people of the city have never amended or adopted this charter. They adopted this one. And if you want proof, provide all the citizens of the city of Lafayette with a call for the election and election results to repeal this Home Rule Charter. You should have that in your records. So, you want a mayor? According to the city of Lafayette Home Rule Charter, adopted and voted on by the people of the city of Lafayette only, this is the charter you should be following. Facts. Provide the elections by the city people to amend or abolish the city Home Rule Charter. If you can't produce it, then this charter is just a decoy.
Good evening. Andy, how long can I stay mayor?
I'll get, I'll answer that.
Oh, okay, you not finished, okay. Just wanna know.
Says it in your city Home Rule Charter that you shall act as mayor until an election is called to have a mayor. It's right there in your city charter.
Thank you.
Y'all may think it's a joke.
No, uh-uh, uh-uh, no, no, I'm serious.
Seriously?
Oh, yeah.
You need to get a copy of this because this is your charter, not this.
Corey, Corey Livier, followed by, is Damon Arseno still here? Then it would be Matthew Humphrey. Then it would be Matthew Humphrey.
It's been a long day, but a great day. Today, I've seen the city of Lafayette come together in peace. I've seen the city of Lafayette come together to defend their ideas, defend what they think is right. I've seen the council accept the presence of the community members with grace and dignity, and I'm very proud to say that I am a part of this community. But I do want to address the council, and by the council, I want to be specific. Mr. Pat Lewis, that is you, right?
Yes, sir.
Good. Liz Abear, I've never met you. My name is Corey Lievier. Andy Nakkan?
Nakkan.
Nakkan?
I'm Mr. Lievier.
How you doing? It's nice to meet you, sir. Nanette Cook? It's nice to meet you, ma'am. Glenn Lazard, I've met him. And of course, Ms. Veronica, the clerk of the council, and I have met the mayor. Ms. Sidra Wengater? All right? Nice to meet you. A lot of things are riding on y'all's shoulders. You guys have a responsibility to the city. You guys have a responsibility to everyone, including yourselves. I was a soldier, and as a soldier, I understood that integrity was the most important thing, the most important asset that I can have. And I stand before you today, not asking, I demand that you display integrity. Integrity is doing the right thing even when no one's looking. And a lot of times, the members of the community are not looking when you make decisions. And some of you, not all of you, have made decisions that were not best for your community when your community wasn't looking. And had the community been looking or standing in your face, you may not have made that decision. If Lafayette is going to move forward, it's going to require each of you to display integrity and honor, words that are lost for some reason in today's world. I plan to walk the path of honor, walk the path of integrity, and lead from the front. I presented a plan for the community led by the organization I founded to operate and maintain and control the four centers that you might be shutting down. And I want you to be on board with that, and I'm going to make sure that I speak to each of you individually to see where you stand. I believe that self-autonomy, self-governing, people doing things for themselves in the community is one of the best ways to live. And if you disagree with that, I want to know why, honestly. But if you cannot come up with a logical and sensible reason for the community of the North Side to not do for themselves what can no longer be done by the city council and the government, I will ensure that your political careers come to a screeching halt. And you might say, well, why would you stand up there and say something like that? Because that is my plan. If you can hear me, you know I'm not timid, and I will ensure that every person in Lafayette hears my voice. Some of them are already listening. I have already began to gather support just in the last few hours for the idea that I presented to the council and to the mayor. People are getting on board, and I will follow through with the idea that I presented, and then I'm going to make sure that we can do it. But if you guys think it's a good idea, if you personally think that allowing a space to be created for people to do for themselves what cannot and no longer can be done by you is a good idea, I would appreciate the support, and I'm sure the community will benefit from it. And like I said, I am a veteran, and I stand by that, and I believe that as a veteran, I have the experience, the knowledge, and the heart and intestinal fortitude to do what needs to be done. Thank you.
Matthew Humphrey, followed by Jasmine Losten, is she still here?
Tough act to follow. I echo most of his sentiments about integrity, and if you all aren't going to do anything about the four parks, then you ought to go ahead and agree to let someone do something about them. It's actually what I rise today to speak about. I'm speaking against any attempt at closing the four parks identified by the administration. The mayor president's Friday night announcement was wildly unprofessional. The supplemental damage control statement released by the chief of minority affairs, a black man who accorded, according to KHTC reporting, wasn't consulted beforehand. How do you leave the man out of the discussion and then assign him to release a statement? And to invoke the name of two civil rights icons, Reverend C.T. Vivian and Congressman John Lewis in that same statement was beyond disgusting. I don't know how he doesn't see himself as a token when things are done like this. That said, I'm also not sure how much being consulted would have mattered anyway because that same reporting from KHTC that he also didn't know about the community meeting at Hyman Park to discuss the closures. How in touch is Mr. Harvin with the minority community whose affairs he's supposed to be the chief of in this administration if he's not in touch with members via phone, email, and social media to know about this event? So now another press release recently reporting that there was a conference call to figure out how to have others pay for it, including churches. What churches? The churches in these underserved neighborhoods or mega churches like Our Saviors? Let's get them on a call with their massive empire. Regardless of the statement worked, I've seen people all over my timeline who fell for this statement as though the locations aren't closing. So I guess kudos to Jamie Onshell for earning his paycheck with further press releases that sound great and effectively do nothing. As you're all aware, I submitted an open records request for emails and financials to determine the calculus surrounding the decision to shutter these specific parks. I passed earlier on commenting about the suspension of the conditional 2% pay increase so that I could just throw some of these comments here. Considering there's already been more than 130 layoffs to date within LCG, I'd encourage the administration tightening its belt, tightening its belt, too. I can certainly think of positions that were mentioned earlier that seem redundant and at least one that reeks of a political favor that could be eliminated. I'd encourage all raises given and all positions created since the mayor president took office to be reviewed to decide whether this is money well spent or if we can potentially get more for what we pay, pay for by getting some of these 130-plus people back to work or keep parks open for underserved kids. I recently worked with Councilman AB, Erica Williams of New Vision Leadership, and about 15 really amazing kids to repaint the Why Lafayette sign. And these kids are just remarkable, and we ought to be ashamed taking their homes, their home base away from them. So I would implore you to find some sort of compromise to closing these four parks, and I look forward to further discussion once I get the results of my records request. Thank you.
It's Marshall Bruiser. Marshall Bruiser. John Bess. And George Bentley will follow. George, John Bess.
I know it's getting late. I just wanted to comment on the move, the, on Move the Mindset for the tremendous work that Mr. Prejon has done on that initiative. I want to comment on Move the Mindset, the tremendous work that Mr. Prejon has done. And I, yeah, yes. Looks like we're catching up to the times with the removal of the Alfred Mutant statue. I fully support that. Most people I know fully support that. It should be in a museum setting. It is unfortunately part of the history, but it should be in a museum setting, not in a.
Mr. Bess, Mr. Bess, we will be talking about the statue in the next item, you know. So can you, can you just, you know, wait till that time?
Okay, that was my statement.
No, 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 we will be talking about the next item. Thank you.
George Bentley. Mr. Bentley, you could have used this podium. You could have used this podium.
All right. A couple of things. The famous ditches in front of my two houses, they came, they resotted and redid the ditches. It's come along fine. Of course, the ditch used to be straight and easy to cut, and now it's got a big wave in it. Not to worry, that one's kind of okay. The one in front of my house, got it pretty good going, fixed up the shoulder for the 15th time in 45 years, planted grass in it, got there yesterday afternoon. Guess who came by? Ever heard me talk about the weed killer people? They killed all the grass. Yeah, I got pictures, Josh. You really should see them. Not only that, behind my driveway, a back out, there's a one-foot drop on a blacktop. They killed all the grass from there all the way to the brand-new sidewalk they put up, the Tom Phillips. Where do you think that dirt's going when the grass dies? Drainage in Lafayette, an issue? No kidding, no kidding. Can you believe this? Unbelievable. It's like, why didn't they just leave my two ditches alone? They were perfect September one year ago. Perfect, except for where the grass was finally going back from the parish coming along our city and spraying and killing the weeds because they turn a thing on 20 feet before they get to my neighbors. He had to keep his ditch up. Okay? I got all the pictures. I've been sitting up there, nice weather for a 73-year-old guy to fix this, right? Anyway, just wanted to let y'all know about that. Okay, next thing. I was here five weeks ago. I asked some questions about, put me in line so I can stay up with anything that will be done to file a road to maybe raising it up, you know, raising the levy a little bit, two inches of blacktop at a time. It's been raised up at least eight inches and probably a foot in the 45 years I've been there. And what I'm worried about is a giant lake that I will name after someone. My house floods, and it will be known that it's named after someone. Okay? The road up that high and entrance into that is sitting there, it's perfect, it's not being used. You know why? Where they should have put, where was our planning department? Where they should have put the entrance into that development? They have a temporary entrance into it to run all the concrete trucks in there, and it's on the upside of the coulee, which would have left the outfall ditch wide open instead of what used to be 22 by 4 and 1/2, is now 24 inches. Okay? Now, I asked that, you followed me out, got my phone number, correct? Last meeting? What'd you do with it? I've never heard anything. I mean, I actually sent something to your office, and I've never heard anything, so that's why I'm back here tonight, no matter what. Okay. Who do I talk to? Who do I talk to? I did. Nobody has contacted me from city government since then.
Well, sir, you can, you can, you can make a call. You can talk to your councilperson, or you can call Mr. Gillery.
I was left with understanding that you all would let me know who to get in touch with.
She'll get in touch with you. Someone will.
This year. Thank you, promised me. By the way, I did thank you for putting up with me five weeks ago. Hope you got that text. Anyway, okay. I haven't done any follow-up on this, totally off the wall, but I heard something last night. There's talk about putting an interstate across Lafayette above ground. Okay? I remember at the meeting, we're talking about putting it below ground. I found out something. There's a major problem with the interstate system in Austin, Texas, and they figured probably the easiest way to solve it might be put it up in the air. Okay? But they don't have a flooding problem over there, and they decided that putting it up in the air will never get funded because it's too expensive. Heard that anybody in Lafayette Parish? That's exactly what I told Elaine Abel when she came off the podium, when it was presented the first time ever at the municipal podium. She came off the dais. I was going up to look at the map. She came over, gave me a kiss and said, what do you think? I said, you'll never get it built till you put it back on the ground. I heard about this last night in Austin. I don't even know if it's true, but I just want to let you all know. Better start thinking about putting it back on the ground because if Austin can't get financed, we got no chance. Somebody tell me when you will have as much traffic coming through Lafayette as you got on 45 going north of Houston in 1960. Thank you very much.
Albert Johnson. James Sam. Now it's for the callers. I really feel bad calling somebody this time.
You wait.
Calvin, if you're watching, call us.
He's first, so we'll get him first.
What Andy said? I'm the, I'm the mayor, I decide, I mean.
Next speaker is William Teely, and Mr. Teely, you may begin speaking.
Hi, my name is Will Teely. I live in City District 2. Councilman Andy Nakkan represents me, so thank you to him, and thank you to everyone on the council for staying up so late. I would like to voice my frustration at the appalling decision by the administration to close the four Northside Park and Recreation Centers and the layoff 37 staff. I call on the city council to reject the mayor president's budget when the time comes and to amend it to restore the four rec centers and the 37 employees who are scheduled to be terminated. I would also call on you, Mr. Mayor-President Gillery. You spoke today on the directive you passed on to your interim Parks and Rec Director that he executed on. Well, tonight, the people of Lafayette have given you, Mr. Gillery, a very clear directive that you need to execute on. We have directed you to restore funding to the four Northside Rec Centers. I would also like to address how the administration makes their decisions on what government services in what part of town are going to get cut when budget cuts are required, because all I've seen so far is Northside, Northside, Northside. I'm running out of fingers in my hand counting the number of governmental services that have been cut from downtown and the Northside, but I can't think of anything, nothing, not one thing that has been cut from the South Side of town. Why should the North Side of Lafayette bear all of the brunt of these budget cuts while the South Side of Lafayette escapes unscathed? For example, this issue, instead of four Northside Parks being proposed to be closed, why wasn't it two Northside Parks and two Southside Parks? The citizens on the Northside pay taxes, both in sales tax and property tax for the city of Lafayette. Also, many of them are LUS ratepayers, and LUS's profits each year are deposited in the city's general fund. So I ask you, with so much tax revenue being generated on the North Side of Lafayette, why do these citizens not deserve basic governmental services like parks? Furthermore, why, 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 why are we still subsidizing the golf courses in the city of Lafayette to the tune of $600,000 a year while the North Side has to petition, rally, and fight to save their parks? Why are white and white-presenting citizens given such luxurious governmental services, but are black and people of color communities denied reasonable access to basic government services? And don't give me this while we're still working on the golf course issue as a response. The fact that this administration could so quickly close the Northside Park and Rec Centers that service our black community, but it's so difficult for you to not give a golf course $600,000 a year is the purest form of racism I can think of. Look, pre-COVID, the North Side was already struggling. With the closure of Shopper's Value Foods on University and Walmart on the thruway, hundreds of jobs are lost, and the North Side became a food desert. Most of the Northside citizens may have access to a nearby gas station or a convenience store, but they don't have easy access to a grocery store with fresh store, but they don't have easy access to a grocery store with fresh produce. And now you're proposing to make the situation far worse by taking away some of the workout and fitness opportunities these residents used to have, and they don't already have access to healthy foods. Here's my message. When you make your decisions about what cuts have to be made, you not only have to think about being fair to all geographical sides of our city, but you also have to consider what each community can afford to give up. And the Northside was already struggling. Meanwhile, what is the South Side giving up? I, I can't think of anything. With all due respect to the administration, each week that goes by under your leadership, the Northside is jumping from crisis to crisis, from online petition to online petition. And it's the sad reality of the situation is the South Side of our town doesn't know what that's like. Do a better job with your future budget cut decisions. Thank you, I appreciate you letting me speak. And congratulations to Mr. Lewis for becoming mayor today.
That's not funny.
Your call has been forwarded to an automatic.
She doesn't want to speak.
I'm moving in Barack's office.
One moment, Mr. Eubanks. This is.
She said no.
She said no.
Next speaker is Jared Eubanks. Mr. Eubanks, you may begin speaking.
My name is Jared Eubanks. I'm a member of City Council District Two. Uh, thank you guys all for your time and the time of everyone there tonight. I apologize if some new information came out, and it's late, and I'm trying to organize my thoughts on the slide, but here we go. These closures are clearly targeted. I wholeheartedly believe that everyone tonight in this room knows this. And to that end, it doesn't seem that this was made as a well-thought-out fiscal judgment. The initial announcement lacked its pertinent detail. The interim park director was not able to provide an estimate of what kind of savings was created by these closures when he was contacted by the current asterisk announcement. There was no information provided on the usage statistics of these facilities. There was no discussion of the costs and savings of operations or closing other facilities in the system, I mean, in the city, or how the usage of those facilities compared to these. It's appalling to me that we would lay off 37 employees and shutter these facilities so capriciously. Now, days later, it feels like the homework has been hastily thrown together to justify a foregone conclusion. If that lack of information didn't make it clear that this was a decision steeped in bias, look no further than the scrambling to reframe the conversation yesterday. A last-minute meeting to discuss innovative ways to keep these facilities open? A meeting that participants didn't even know that's what it was about until it was about to happen? After this meeting on social media, we have Carlos Harmon claiming that this is a step in making our recreation center bigger and better than ever before. It all feels so disingenuous and clearly reflects confusion and chaos in the mayor-president's office. Those parks serve a part of our city that has the highest rates of people lacking reliable access to transportation. Moving and consolidating these programs might sound like a great idea at first blush, but for many of the people that need these the most, these programs might as well be canceled because they'll no longer be accessible. How much of the estimated savings between mid-August and the final adoption of the budget in November? Are we really going to temporarily lay these people off for two to three months while we figure out if that's what we want to do? Why aren't these facilities open in the meantime? And how can one appreciate the input of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission when they're not even informed so that they can have input? I'm asking the council to stand up to political maneuvering and bias dressed up as fiscal responsibility. I'm not saying the Parks and Recreation Department should be immune to cuts, but real consideration of the uses, the cost, and the community served by these facilities should happen before we close them. Thank you so much for your time tonight.
There are no more speakers?
Okay, no more speakers?
No, sir.
Okay, that's in, no more speakers. Mr. Gillery, you have any comments you'd like to address?
Everyone knows my intent by now, and this is the beginning of the budgetary process, and you know clearly where I stand. That's transparency. Live within your means. We have a millage plus revenues out of this department. My directive was very easy to my director, and my requests to the councils were very straightforward. Let's live within the millage and the revenues and find a way to take that, those dollars in service as many people as we are blessed to serve. That's the intent, but this is the beginning of the process. As three of you know that, four of you know that, you've been through this before, we'll get through it, and I welcome your ideas. Again, I just ask everybody to look at my office's budget compared to the previous budgets for probably a couple administrations. I very much believe Mr. Olivier talked to one of those Army Corps values, picking on my friend, the Marine, but I love you. You know, one of those leading by example. So, very happy to announce that I cut the numbers. My cuts before I even got in office were over 23% to my office. I cannot ask my directors to do something I'm not willing to do. This Northside/Southside stuff, and this is good to intro, kind of lead into this next item. I've heard it several times today, and I'm welcoming this. We live in Lafayette. We live in Lafayette. We live in Lafayette. So the day that that comes where it's no Northside, Southside, Eastside, whatever side, I welcome that day. And I think conversations like this help us get there. I don't shy away from that. I welcome your thoughts, and I appreciate it. And my dear friend, Pastor Milton, I appreciate you clarifying my smirk. We've, uh, we've been in some, some, the trenches together too, and, you know, as many times, we would run to people that most people would run away from in that courthouse. And I've seen you in action, I know where your heart is, and I know you have a good mind to match it. So I appreciate you shedding some light on that. Are we ready to go to the next item, Mr. Chair? Are we good?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Hold on a second, please. Ms. Eber.
I wanted to make sure that the public knew that, because it is 12:20, that Veronica did try calling anyone that called in, correct? Because there was a little bit of silence, and if anybody's watching from home or watches back, or watches back, they maybe don't realize that Veronica did try calling all of the blue cards who called in wanting to speak. So just wanted to make sure for the record that, if you don't mind saying that.
Yes, yes, I did call all the blue cards, um, and if they were not here or did not answer, we just, you know, passed. Um, and we did call everyone who signed in as well.
All right. I just wanted to make sure for the record we said that, because there was, if you're watching from, watching from home, you may not have realized what just happened, why there was a long pause, so.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, Veronica.
Thank you.
I agree.
Okay. Resolutions, we will move on. This is a public hearing, and blue sheets are available for anyone wishing to address the council. The five-minute rule does apply. Chairman, please read item number seven.
City Resolution 25, 2020. A resolution of the Lafayette City Council supporting the efforts of the Lafayette Mayor-President to remove the General Alfred Mouton statue.
Okay, I need a motion and a second from council. Motion by Mr. Nakane, second by Ms. Liz Eber. At this time, I'd like to yield the floor to Mayor President for our presentation.
Yes, Mr. Chair, and I appreciate, and I hope I don't butcher what a gentleman said earlier today, and I thought it was so fitting. No one has to lose for someone else to gain, and I hope I said that correctly. No one has to lose for someone else to gain. We have an opportunity as a community to heal. We have an opportunity as a community to fix a wrong of 98 years. So, Mr. Chair, with your permission, I'd like to just defer to my comments. We put together, I put together a statement about three or four weeks ago, and I think it's just fitting. I say everything I need to say in that video, and I reiterate every single word.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Go ahead, all.
I think our C.A. is going to put a second, oh, there we go. No, I need a diet. Wake up. I just broke every screen on the. In 2023, Lafayette Parish will celebrate our bicentennial. It has been nearly 200 years since we were chartered by the Louisiana Legislature in 1823. Two years earlier, in 1821, Jean Mouton, a wealthy planner, donated a parcel of land to the community known as Vermillionville for a courthouse and a cathedral. Jean Mouton became known as the founder of Vermillionville, that became the city of Lafayette in 1884. His son Alexander would become a United States Senator, and later, the first Democratic Governor of the state of Louisiana. Alexander Mouton would serve as chairman of Louisiana Secession Convention in 1861. One of Alexander Mouton's 11 children, Alfred, became a military leader, a Confederate general. There's a state historic monument where Alfred Mouton died in battle and was buried in Mansfield, Louisiana, in 1864. In 1874, General Alfred Mouton was moved to the cemetery of St. John the Evangelist here in Lafayette, where he rests today, near his father and grandfather. The Mouton family founded our city and were pivotal in founding our parish. This is our history, to understand, to learn from, to heal from. Today, the legacy of this family as owners of slaves, and particularly the statue of General Mouton downtown, is a source of significant conversation. Some of this conversation is thoughtful and serious. Some of this conversation is rooted in mutual respect and a desire for redemption and reconciliation between our peoples. Some of it is rooted in how to constructively move our community forward. But some of the conversation we are seeing is not. It is vulgar, threatening, and offensive. Rather than helping us come to terms with our history, it is an impediment to mutual respect, to redemption, and reconciliation. The violence and destruction we have seen across our nation seems to be rooted in promoting racial division and rending the fabric of our society until it is unrecognizable. We have successfully avoided this kind of mayhem in our city and parish. For the most part, our conversation has been respectful, constructive, and civil. Despite threats, we've had several spirited protests and demonstrations without major incidents so far. I am engaged in a conversation that includes the key stakeholders who have been a part of this history. I have met with Bishop Desatelle to discuss the role of the Catholic Church in our history and helping bring about reconciliation today. I am meeting with our pastors on the North Side of our parish and pastors on the South Side of our parish to discuss the role of our communities of faith in bringing about mutual understanding. I have met with leadership of the United Daughters of the Confederacy, who erected the Mouton statue nearly 100 years ago, to discuss how best to protect this monument from illegal destruction or defacement. In many ways, this is a problem of politics and government. While there's, there is a permanent injunction against moving the statue resulting from a settlement and final judgment 40 years ago, circumstances have changed. Legally, the judge has discretion to alter the agreement reached in 1980 in order to protect public safety and the statue from destruction. At its root, however, this is a spiritual challenge. This is a test of our most deeply-held beliefs and values. It's a question of who we are and who we want to be as a people. If this statue was simply a testament to General Mouton's valor in battle, it might be less objectionable. However, this specific statue was erected in 1922, at a time known as the Jim Crow Era, when Black people were systematically denied their basic rights. It was a time that glorified and preserved the idea that people of color are somehow less than others, that they are not equal. As a Catholic, I know that all God's children are created equal and should enjoy equal rights to life, liberty, and pursuing happiness. As an attorney, I know that achieving the promise of our laws guaranteeing equality requires that they be faithfully upheld. As a combat veteran, I have seen and experienced the intense devotion that binds those who would give their lives in battle for the ideas, principles, and values they believe in. As a father, I am committed to a community in which my children and all children will succeed or fail due to their effort and the content of their character rather than the color of their skin. As a Republican, I am proud that my party was founded in 1860 on opposition to slavery as an institution. I am proud that my party's first president, Abraham Lincoln, abolished the sinful institution of slavery in the United States and fought a bloody Civil War to preserve the Union. That Republicans passed the Fourteenth and Fifteenth Amendments, establishing equal protection and extending due process protections to the states. That Republicans were the driver for passing women's suffrage in 1920. That President Ronald Reagan established Martin Luther King Day as a national holiday. And that President Trump signed the First Step Act, landmark criminal justice reform legislation addressing serious issues of structural racism and federal sentencing. My party, from its beginning, has stood for equality. Ultimately, this is not a Republican or Democrat, conservative or liberal issue. It's a question of what is best for the long-term future of our community. This statue is a part of our history that cannot and should not be denied. But we have an opportunity today to make history. This downtown intersection is an important gateway into the heart of the city of Lafayette. We want visitors to experience the vibrant optimism and determination of our people when they come here. We should honestly, honestly ask ourselves whether this statue is the best symbol for that. I believe it is time for us, as a community, to put down the burdens of 1922 so that we will be able to successfully shoulder the challenges and opportunities of 2022 and beyond. Since taking the office, the oath of office in January, I have thought about this issue at length. I have prayed for wisdom and insight. I have thought deeply about how to best respect our past while embracing a vibrant, robust vision for our future. This is not a decision made in haste, but rather out of conviction and dedication to my oath of office. We will not fall prey to the madness that is sweeping cities across our nation. We will make our decisions thoughtfully, with an eye to what is the best way to understand and display our history, and to do what is best for our people and for our future. We will respect the rule of law, protecting our public monuments from destruction, defacing, or desecration. We will honor the sacrifice of those who have fought in all of our nation's wars. We will honor those individuals and families who founded and shaped our community, placing their contributions in the proper historical perspective. We will honor and respect the work of the dedicated men and women in law enforcement who place their lives in danger every day to keep us safe. We will not tolerate efforts to divide our community by race, using incendiary rhetoric to inflame passions and resentment. We will work for an inclusive community, committed to the equality of all of our people, and ensuring that we're all treated fairly, no matter where we live in Lafayette Parish. We will work to ensure that the statue of General Mouton finally rests at its most appropriate place, offering place, offering proper historical context for his life and legacy. We will work conscientiously to free the public space in front of the Old City Hall for activities appropriate to our community in 2022. The time has come for me to clarify my position. I will instruct the legal department to take all steps available to see that this monument is removed. At the same time, I will ask the court for permission to allow us to protect the Muton statue from destruction. I will ask the city council to pass a resolution in support of these actions. We face historic challenges here in our city and our parish in the wake of the COVID-19, public health emergency, and the decline in energy prices. Our response to these challenges is complicated by the confusion and counterproductive infighting we are seeing across our nation. I am determined that we will come together as a people. We are one parish. We share one future. We all have a right to be treated fairly, no matter where we live in Lafayette Parish. We are strongest when we speak with one voice. Once we accept this profound truth, we will all finish our first 200 years with a strong, unshakable foundation on which to build a safer, more prosperous future for our next 200 years. Thank you, and may God bless you.
Okay, that's it, Mr. Mayor President?
That's it, Mr. Chair. I do ask for the support of this council as we move forward. In my video, I said for the next 200 years, we have a foundation, but it's shaky right now, and it's needlessly shaky, needlessly shaking by a Jim Crow monument that was not placed by anyone of us. I don't even know who put it up there. But if you want to preserve history, then preserve history, but do so without harming an entire class of people. It's pretty straightforward. So I simply ask for your support as we request the court for permission to remove it off of public property. You see, public property creates sensitivity. We saw that in other discussions that the previous city parish council had on another issue. Those sensitivities, you can't pick and choose. Public property, public time, public dime causes very, very sensitive factors that we have to take in consideration. So I humbly and respectfully ask for your support unanimously. We need not defer. We need not think about it. Let's do the right thing. Thank you.
Okay, council discussion? Mr. Nakim.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Mayor President, I appreciate your presentation. You were clear in your explanation. Wrong glasses. I grew up with many Mutons here, as most people did, having spent a lot of time with them in school, elementary school, high school, college, at a table, sitting and relaxing and eating and drinking. It's with a sad heart that I realize where this statue came from, because growing up, as I discussed with other council members here, that was an iconic statue as far as the location. The meaning behind it didn't really mean anything to me or to many people up here also, as discussed. It was just, we knew where we were when we saw the statue. We didn't know the history behind it. Our mayor definitely clarified that for us, and it's a shame that of all the great Mutons we have in the city and brought us to where we are, the generosity they displayed, the care and the love they showed for this community, it's come down to this. And it's with a heavy heart that I say, obviously, we've had other Mutons call in and say that it's time, you know, it's time to do something. I didn't realize that, but I did get some emails from some Muton relatives who said it's time. I had probably had 40, maybe even 50 to two emails to remove the statue, as opposed to two to keep it. I did have one email from a young man, and I wanted to read it because his sentiments were mine initially. He says, "I was born and raised," and I just got this today, "I was born and raised in Lafayette, and I am a graduate of Terrence Catholic High School. My graduation ring has a rebel soldier on it holding a Confederate flag. I am of Mexican descent, raised since birth here in Lafayette, and I'm married to a Shastan, a family whose ancestors owned Solitude Plantation. I mention these things because if I believed that a flag, a statue, or who someone descends from defined me or my opportunities, I would never pursue or attain success in my life. If we do not embrace our history and use it to make ourselves better, then we have no future." He went on to say a few other things, but, you know, it made me realize that we have to look past this statue and look to our future. It is very sensitive for a lot of people here, and I understand that after having discussions with a lot of people. I can't imagine what it would be like walking past there and be reminded of Jim Crow laws and the horrible civil rights atrocities that went on in the early years of this city. I was lucky, I got here in 1957. I was raised here, but I didn't experience that. I was raised in a family that was welcoming to everybody, and I loved that and I embraced that. I think it's time for this city to embrace that same feeling that I grew up with. It's time to let this go and move forward, and God bless the people of this city. Thank you.
Any more council discussion? No, Ms. Williams, public comments?
For public comment, citizens who did not wish to speak. We had actual call-ins to the council office. We had seven call-ins in opposition and two in person who showed up here who signed up in opposition, so a total of nine in opposition.
That's call-ins, correct? And two that came in?
Call-in and two in person here. So that's nine total. And do not speaks in support, we had 105 who in person signed in here at tonight's meeting, 147 called into the council office in support, and we had 27 emails in support.
I want clarification. When you say in support, in support of what?
The resolution.
The resolution. Okay, I just want to make sure everybody understands that.
In support of the resolution, for a total of 279 citizens who voiced their support for the resolution.
Good.
Okay. We do have speakers signed in as well. Fred Prejean is the first speaker, and Rick Swanson, is he here? Okay. You'll follow Mr. Prejean.
It's good to see old friends. I've met with you enough times I will never forget. I was all prepared to say good evening, but it's morning. So good morning to you. As you know, my name is Frederick Prejean. There's only about two people who call me Frederick. Everyone calls me Fred, so I guess I'm stuck with that. I am here tonight representing two entities. One, I am the president of Move the Mindset. And two, I am also one of the litigants, one of the 16 people who filed suit to challenge the injunction that prevents the statue from being moved. We are the primary organization that has lobbied to move the Alfred Muton Jim Crow statue from public property to a contextualized location where its historic significance can be fully understood. We are an organization committed to promoting racial and social justice. Over the last four and a half years, through educational presentations, community dialogue, appearances at city council meetings, unlawful peaceful rallies, Move the Mindset has endeavored to enlighten our community of the interrelationship between Alfred Muton, the lost cause, and the Jim Crow era. We are history teachers, among other things. Move the Mindset recently sponsored a petition seeking community support for the movement of this symbol of hatred and division. Much to our surprise, not only did Lafayette residents sign the petition, people from throughout Louisiana signed the petition, people from throughout the United States signed the petition, people from foreign countries signed our petition. It went viral. Yes, our petition circulated worldwide, producing 17,456 signatures in support of moving the statue. The Alfred Muton Jim Crow statue is not just a resemblance of a man, it is a symbol of hatred and division. This statue was specifically erected in 1922 as a symbol to glorify white supremacy and anti-black vigilante violence, a role that Alfred Muton was very familiar with prior to and during the Civil War. The Alfred Muton Jim Crow statue has always relied on false narratives to justify its existence and his murderous war crimes. Alfred fought in the Civil War to keep the ancestors of African Americans in Lafayette and throughout the South in slavery in perpetuity. Alfred Muton fought to maintain a system that kidnapped African families from their homeland, dismantled family relationships, raped black women, sold their children for profit, psychologically dehumanized human beings, worked these innocent black captives to death, and maimed or murdered those who sought freedom. There is no denying these facts. When I hear people defending the erection and continued presence of the Jim Crow statue, it is clear the marginalizing of black people's rights, privileges, and humanity is actually what is sought. Slavery and Jim Crow are systems of exploitation and dehumanization. Is this the memory people wish to preserve and showcase on public property in our city? I think not. A great city does not hide its true history. It corrects its flaws. We must acknowledge the pain that monuments to white supremacy are intended to inflict and continue to inflict on our community. I would like to thank you, the council, for your consideration and hopefully support to effectuate the move of this Jim Crow statue that shames our community. It has taken our organization, Move the Mindset, four and a half...
Time's up.
It's 29 seconds, 30 seconds?
It's beyond you, Tony.
Oh, it's going up. Thank you very much. I hope I made my point.
You did.
Rick Swanson, followed by Jerome Moreau?
My name is Rick Swanson. I live in Andy Knopkin's district, and I thank you all for this chance to speak in favor of moving the Muton statue. I have a law degree and a PhD in political science. I've taught civil rights law at U L for 20 years, but I'm speaking here tonight only in my personal capacity. In recent years, I've done extensive research on our region's civil rights history. As we consider the fate of the Muton statue, we need to know who he was. Alfred Muton enslaved a dozen men, women, and children. Enslavement always involved kidnapping, robbery, and terror, often involved rape and torture, and sometimes murder. But there's more. As a member of the Lafayette Parish Police Jury, Muton helped lead the effort to keep over 4,000 of his fellow parish citizens enslaved, and the law he enforced required that people who resisted enslavement be tortured or murdered. But there's more. At the start of the Civil War, Muton joined the Confederate Army. Alfred's own father and every other Southern white leader at the time said the reason that they would leave the U.S., form a separate Confederacy, and fight to keep that separate government was to keep 4 million people enslaved based on their skin color. But there's more. Historical evidence shows that Muton was a war criminal even as defined then. Time prevents me from detailing his crimes here, but I've sent detailed documentation to the Mayor President, all of you on the council, and several local media outlets. This documentation is also available on my public Google Drive at tinyurl.com/lpblackcivilrights. Again, that address is tinyurl.com/lpblackcivilrights. In short, though, while he was a Confederate general, Alfred Muton systematically enslaved large numbers of black men, civilian noncombatants, and forced them to do hard labor under the life-threatening condition of military bombardment. Muton then had these men publicly murdered if they tried to escape this cruelty. Muton and his forces also helped enslave or reenslave several thousand black civilian noncombatant men, women, and children. These were war refugees who had been either living in U.S. military camps or working as paid laborers in U.S.-held territory. Moreover, when black U.S. soldiers were captured by forces partially under Muton's command, these captured black soldiers were not treated as prisoners of war, but they were instead either enslaved or murdered. All these actions were crimes under U.S., Confederate, and/or Louisiana law at that time. Muton's high rank, the fact he ordered some of these actions, and the large scale of these crimes all make his war crimes particularly egregious. Muton died during the Civil War, but to understand his statue, it's also necessary to know what happened after the Civil War. Although the U.S. briefly tried to provide civil rights to blacks in the South, Southern whites used systematic terrorism to assassinate black political leaders and terrorize black voters. This included Lafayette Parish. Southern whites then used their political monopoly to reimpose an extreme racial class system. It involved wide-scale segregation, intense economic oppression, the denial of black voting, and the enforcement of this racial class system both through the criminal justice system and through lynchings that went unprosecuted. All this included Lafayette Parish. This severe racial class system was known as Jim Crow. Part of Jim Crow also involved intentionally rewriting a false version of Southern history that glorified the Confederacy and white supremacy. Southern whites systematically purged accurate history textbooks from Southern schools, including in Louisiana, and replaced them with fictional Southern histories that minimized slavery, erased Confederate atrocities, and hid the systematic anti-black violence and oppression that occurred for a century after the Civil War. Southern whites then built Jim Crow statues to celebrate white supremacy based on these false histories. And just a few moments ago, Mayor President Gilery correctly stated that the Muton statue was and is a Jim Crow monument. So today is a chance for our community to stand united against false history and white supremacy and for truthful history and racial equity by moving the statue to a museum where the full and accurate history of Alfred Muton can finally be told. Removing a public monument to white supremacy is only one step of a thousand-mile journey towards achieving full racial equity in our community, but it is an essential step. Thank you.
Mr. Swanson, hold up a second, please. A few councils have a question, please.
Mr. Swanson, those atrocities were very horrible, and they were widespread throughout the South during those times. It's hard to believe people had endured that. Out of curiosity, what was the party affiliation of the leaders of this group?
The leaders of which group?
The ones who were doing the enslavement, the war atrocities, the crimes, the Jim Crow laws. Who passed that? What was the party affiliation, the people putting that?
At the time, it was the Democratic Party.
Democratic Party. All right. Thank you, sir.
I should note, though, as you may be aware, that the modern political parties only bear similarity in name only to the parties of 150 years ago.
Yes, sir. I also have a question. I was jotting some down right here. I was jotting something down right here. As a teacher, what do you see moving the statue as erasing history?
That's a great question. Of course, we've all heard that in recent years. We've heard that often. That is a completely false argument. Nothing could be further from the truth. You know, we all know we don't learn our history from statues. We learn it from books and movies and schools and museums. And in fact, if this is moved to a museum, as I hope it is, and I think as everyone is hoping it will be, that you can tell far more history in a museum than you can on a statue. And in fact, just as an example, if you look at the inscription on the pedestal of the Alfred Mouton statue, you won't find any of the really important facts I just gave you about Mouton's life, whereas all those could be told in a museum along with many, many more facts about the contextual history. And that's really, I think, the main point I was trying to make at the end of my statement is that this effort to build Jim Crow monuments by Southern whites was really part of their effort to erase accurate Southern history and create this imaginary, pure, pro-Confederate version of history. And so, really, the statue itself erased history because it erased or hid the truth about Mouton and the Confederacy. By moving any statue of this nature to a museum, it actually finally allows the telling of that history that was purposely hidden so long ago.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Veronica?
Jerome Moreau, followed by Ann Swanson.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Jerome Moreau, and I have the privilege to actually represent the taxpayers who are contesting the injunction. And it sounds like it's already been established, and I'm not going to talk about the Jim Crow nature of the statue. The mayor president has acknowledged it. Fred Prejean eloquently and Rick Swanson eloquently explained it. Not going to talk about that. That's established. I'm not going to talk about the Civil War or anything like that. I'm only going to talk about the injunction because for years, our city has used it as an excuse, and I want to say that tonight we're going to end that. They've used it as an excuse to not take any action. And when we went and looked, well, I was actually curious. What does that mean, that the city can't take any action? Why couldn't they take any action? And so I went to the library, and I found the archives of the Daughters of the Confederacy. And I was able to read, and I'm going to present to the council, contemporaneous notes made by the Daughters of the Confederacy that explained just what was happening. You would think, as members of the council, that public property would be zealously protected by our city. Statue, of course, is owned by the city. That's established. The property is owned by the city and all of us. That's established. So you would think that when folks like the Daughters of the Confederacy said, "We want to stop the city's action," back in 1980, the city would have fought. They would have said, "No, that's inappropriate," just as you would, just as anyone would to claim over public property. The notes, which I will share with you, make very clear that the fix was in 1980. The Daughters acknowledge it in their own minutes that they had no property right. And you can see this. I'll pass it out for you. The writer says, "Had we held title to the property or the monument, we could have had a legal say about the move, but we did not." So the Daughters, in their own contemporaneous notes, acknowledged no proprietary interest in it, no ability to do anything. Did the city fight it? No. On page three, again, I'll share this. They have a note before it even played out that the mayor has assured us that when he gets in office, he will cancel the order and the matter will be closed as far as the city is concerned. So taking away whatever political qualms you may have about, "Is this historical or not?" Which is clearly not historical, but even if you gave it that, it's bad government in 1980. And that persisted 60 years after the creation of this statue and after the donation of the statue to the city. And tonight, hopefully, this council says that bad government, regardless of what your politics are, what you believe historically, is bad for the city, it's bad for democracy. I've sat here for six, seven hours, as many of people have, and it's fabulous to hear people explain and the council to talk. And we need to have this dialogue because these types of back-room deals, that those are how systemic racism persists. Because people have an action, and people just nod and say, "No, don't mess with that. No, we're going to take care of that." And we have to vote as a council to say it's unacceptable. So we would ask for that resolution to be passed. Obviously, we will contest it in court more vigorously with more legal boring stuff that it's too early in the morning to discuss, but at least on its face, the political action of 1980 city should not be repeated tonight, and it should be rejected with a unanimous vote. Thank you.
Ann Swanson.
Ms. E. Bear? I'm sorry, bud.
I'm sorry. I had a quick question, and this may be, I don't know, you, Jerome, can answer it, and you mayor can answer it. Talking about the injunction, because this was a big topic of conversation in 2016, and we received different legal word of, and I spoke to multiple, because of course, I don't just trust one attorney, right? I've got to talk to multiple attorneys. And typically, when you talk to multiple attorneys, you get multiple long-winded answers, right? And I say that with love because my brother's an attorney.
I was short. I didn't even start great five minutes.
Right. And I'm on council with an attorney, right? So I love you all. But back then, it was, yep, true. So they all said, "There's no way, due to the permanent injunction in place, this will ever be moved." And so we left it, like you said, we left it alone because we received multiple information on that. You come into office, you put the statement out, and media, I think, reported in a different light, that they gave the impression, many media outlets gave the impression that this thing was getting taken down that night, tomorrow, next week. That's not the case, obviously. And then I know people have emailed me and other council members saying, "Vote to take it down." And I guess I want to with full transparency, and I never want to mislead my constituents as to believing the vote tonight is to get it taken down tomorrow, right? There is a court case that will be the next steps. Can you, one of you, guide our attorneys, Paul, if he's awake back there, bless his heart, is what are the next steps? Right? So whoever wants to explain that for the public and for all of us.
Please, Mr. Mayor President.
We kind of grew up together as lawyers, you know? I remember seeing at the ends of court. We do, I feel our city parish attorney behind me, but I cheated, I saw him. So it's our legal position, well, let me backtrack to answer your question. Lafayette has proven itself to be a very civil community. We've had peaceful protests, loud and clear, "Don't destroy property," but still be very vocal. We also respect the rule of law. Part of the rule of law is that that third branch of government, the judiciary, who, and I agree with your position on the injunction, but it is an injunction right now because it hasn't been invalidated. So our position is, and the administration's position is, we want to request to the judge to allow us to move it off of public property. This resolution is just to express the council's support of my request to the judge. We are different branches of government, but we represent the same people. And I strongly believe that you agree with me, but I also believe, as a lawyer, that our position is strengthened when we are unified because this is ultimately still a request to another branch of government. So if we can have two-thirds of the government asking one-third of the government to honor our wishes of our property, as Jerome said, I think it definitely strengthens our position. Now, our lawyer can tell us about our legal position, but I think I can summarize it. There's case law that supports. Yeah, there's case law that supports even permanent injunctions if there are material changes, which there clearly are. One, your mayor supports an opposite position. Your council, which I don't think, the council was silent during that injunction.
Council was absolutely silent.
But the council, we're asking you, don't be silent today. Let's stand in unity for the right thing. So that in itself is a material change. We can go on and on, but Greg, am I missing anything? If I didn't butcher it, I'm going to be quiet.
No, that's okay.
And thank you, Mr. Moreau. Appreciate you.
That's great. My question was, next steps. So goes to court?
Yeah, we go to court, and we make that argument.
And the court date is?
August 17th.
So they go to court August 17th, and they are going to determine whether or not the statue will be moved?
That's our hope. We believe that they are in a position from a judicial standpoint, or judicial posture to rule on it that day from the voluminous pleadings that are filed.
So we should get an answer that day, and then the statue comes down?
When the judge gives us permission, we will secure it in a secure location until a proper resting place for it is found. We are still in discussion with those entities and with the community to have this dialogue, but we are going to do that in a very respectful manner.
Okay. And I hope that the families are involved in that discussion as well.
Yes, and I continue to welcome the Mouton family and anyone else.
Okay. So that was my question. I just wanted, for clarification purposes, that the public knows and understands the process. So that's all I had.
And if I could just add to one thing that the mayor president said, is that that consideration about how the court will decide, I respectfully submit, is not something that should lead this council to vote no for it. Because as I think the mayor president said correctly, when this council expresses its will that it wants to follow the mayor president's direction, that is persuasive authority, not just for the, you know, the plain way that it looks, but also for some of the arguments that the city have offered, which are a little different from my clients, but we have the same end, which is to move it. And to continue with a peaceful, dignified way that Move the Mindset has had this conversation for many years.
And that's all. I simply wanted it to be a clarification on next steps. I want to be mindful because there is a lawsuit involved, and attorneys are involved, and the other side is, I don't know if they're here or not, to speak their minds. I just want to be mindful. That's all I wanted, was the next steps for the public to know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hold on a second. Wait, just a minute, please.
Absolutely.
Ms. Knacken?
Actually, I didn't have any questions for you. I just wanted to make comment. And see, this statue in many ways has really touched me because being so close to the family, I initially was like, what an insult. But education is a wonderful thing. And realizing what's going on, where it came from, and where we're heading, I just want to thank everybody here involved, Mr. Prejean and your group, for being so respectful about this process. We are doing this in a humanely manner. We're not going out there and with ropes, tearing it down, trying to destroy public property, you know? And it really is a very good thing, the way people have approached this. And I want to thank everyone sitting in this audience and everyone in the city for all of that process we're going through right now, for respecting that. It's a good thing. And thank you all very much.
Thank you so much. Ms. Knacken?
Thank you, sir. I just want to make a comment that, no, you can go. That I was on the council in 2016 when Mr. Prejean came to the council and pleaded his case why the Mouton statue needed to be moved. A lot of us, really, a lot gave up on that. Mr. Prejean and his group, Move the Mindset, did not give up. And what they did, every time they protested, was always peaceful. So I'd just like to applaud Mr. Prejean as the president of Move the Mindset. Thank you, sir, for educating. And also, also, also what he did, he educated all the people about the Mouton statue. If it wasn't for him and his organization, we wouldn't have known anything about the Mouton statue, what it represents. I, for one, been around here for 63 years, and I thought the Mouton statue was a landmark for me until Mr. Prejean started educating the city about the Mouton statue. Thank you, Mr. Prejean, and your group.
Ann Swanson.
My name's Ann Swanson, and I reside in Andy Knackens District in Andy. I was very touched by your remarks tonight and the process you've come to for your own conclusion on this. And I'm speaking in support of moving the Mouton statue, and I hope the full council joins, along with the mayor president, the diocese of Lafayette, and other religious leaders, Move the Mindset, the NAACP, and so many others. I love Lafayette, and I'm a student of history. And because of these factors, I spent several years working at a museum. And one of my favorite things I got to do there was get to be a tour guide. And so what I want to do tonight is be a tour guide for all of us for some key moments in Lafayette Parish government history. So our first stop is going to be the year 1823. The Lafayette Parish Police Jury is formed. In the very first meeting, they vote to create a slave patrol system. Thus, one of Lafayette's government's very first actions was to oppress and torture black people. Fast forward to the year 1860, Alfred Mouton is president pro temp of the Lafayette Police Jury. Yes, that Alfred Mouton. In this role, he oversaw the slave patrol system and made it even crueler. This was at the same time he was leading vigilante efforts that, among other things, enforced the racial class system through illegal means. And not long before, he went on to oversee acts during the Civil War that even at the time were war crimes, including enslavement and murder of black US soldiers held as prisoners of war. After the Civil War, there was a brief period in the United States that attempted to create a system of racial equality. This period is known as Reconstruction. However, organized terrorism throughout the South, including here in Lafayette Parish, brought attempts of racial equality to an end. The Confederacy lost the war, but won Reconstruction. In other words, equality was defeated, oppression won. The laws dubbed Jim Crow were then created to create and institutionalize and reinforce white supremacy. The nationwide trend of Confederate monument building was one of the ways to put on display this reinforced system of oppression. In 1922, Lafayette got her own Jim Crow statue in the concrete incarnation of Confederate Brigadier General Alfred Mouton. The United Daughters of the Confederacy donated the monument to the city and placed it in front of City Hall. At the dedication of the statue, the United Daughter spokesperson said how the statue was to honor "our great and truly noble Southern race." And at the time, Southern whites used the term "Southerners" to mean white people. So make no mistake about it, this was absolutely about white supremacy, which it sounds like has come to be something that has been very clearly realized. And now, and then, no, not now, we're not there yet, but nearly a century later, and only four short years ago, in 2016, Councilman Kenneth Boudreau encouraged the public to come and comment regarding the Alfred Mouton statue. And many of you here tonight, you were here that night, and you're going to remember that there were about 30 people who spoke, about half for and half against, and all who spoke in favor of keeping it in its current location were white, and those who spoke against were a mix of black and white. And I bet by the time everyone gets done speaking tonight, those stats are going to be way different tonight. And this leads us to the last stop on our tour, and that's this evening. Tonight, this body will make a decision on if you support the action of the historic governing bodies who uphold white supremacy or make a commitment to equity, and have every full faith that we're going to make a commitment to equity tonight. Moving the statue is not going to end racism in Lafayette, but it will be a living demonstration of our government's stand against racism and for the just Lafayette we all know is possible. Thank you.
Arlene. Arlene Von Satt. Arlene. Matthew Humphrey.
Happy Wednesday. Don't worry, it's not as long-winded as the other ones. I'm going to reiterate a few things that other people said, but it's short. I arrived today in support of the resolution to move the Jim Crow-era statue of defeated Confederate General Alfred Mouton taxpayer-funded land in downtown Lafayette. As a member of Move the Mindset, as well as a plaintiff on the lawsuit to lift the injunction, I fully support the movement of the Mouton statue to a more appropriate location. There it can be adored by people who want to see it and not serve as a reminder of a painful time for our Black and people of color citizens and subsidized by taxpayers who don't support what it stands for. That said, I just, I wanted to make it very clear, and you know, Lizzy, we're talking about this, I wanted to make it clear to those in the audience and those watching that this is just a resolution. It's a statement of the council offering an opinion. This resolution is not binding. It doesn't do anything legally, similar to the mayor president's recent video statement on the topic. So yes, please, pass the resolution and do it. this, is, I wanted to make it clear to those in the audience and those watching that this is just a resolution. It's a statement of the council offering an opinion. This resolution is not binding. It doesn't do anything legally, similar to the Mayor President's recent video statement on the topic. So yes, please, pass the resolution and do it unanimously. I just wanted to reiterate to everyone that the vote tonight passing it doesn't get the statue moved. And more importantly, there still remains work to do to put an end to systemic racism in Lafayette, including police reform and ensuring black resources to, sorry, ensuring resources to black communities aren't targeted for budget cuts and so much more. In closing, I would just like to reiterate that Black Lives Matter, and they always will. Thank you.
Kenneth Broussard? And after Kenneth will be Carlos Harvin.
Good morning.
Hey, guys.
Good to see you all. Thank you for being here and for staying so long. I just want to stand before you and add my voice to, and request that you unanimously approve this resolution. Because the statue is a block of marble that, for me, is an idol, and resembles the hearts and some of the minds of people in the city, hopefully none of you sitting up here, that are closed. And I just want, I'm sorry, it's too late for me. I want to say what Matthew said. Moving the statue is just the first thing, because obviously there's a lot of racism still existent in the city and within the city system and its systemic, as witnessed by the long discussions and presentations tonight about the closing of the centers, and even the early voting sites. There is some, there's a tendency to forget that my world is not everybody else's world. And your constituents don't live in the same world as Mr. Lewis's, Mr. Rube Lazar's, excuse me, and Mr. Nakane's. So, you know, you just have to remember that you represent, as someone said earlier, all the people. And get out of your comfort zone, please. And rather than relying on your liaison, I invite you to go take some walks into the communities, the black communities of the city, and go meet people there. And talk about transparency. Have the transparency upfront, not as a shock value to get people involved, please. You know, in your, that's what we're asking. Because that kind of, that's part of racism, where we don't include people on the front end. We think we have the answers, or we make our plans and then go try to stir up approval. And so racism means that we exclude others when we're making our decisions, rather than think with them and listen to them first. Listen to them first, from their experience, and what the impact of your decisions will have on them. And your decisions have impacts on, as you know, I'm sure, every community, every segment of the community of Lafayette. If we want to be one, we have to open our hearts, and our minds, and our eyes, and not be like that cold statue, unthinking, unfeeling, unseeing, unmoving, and not hearing. Thank you.
Carlos Harvin, followed by Marybel Deetz.
Good evening, members of the council, Mr. Mayor President, and citizens, brothers and sisters of Lafayette. My name is Carlos Harvin. I'm honored to serve as the first ever Chief of Minority Affairs, position created by our Mayor President, so that we can close gaps of disparity in our city and parish. I am here to speak in support of moving the Alfred Mouton statue, which currently is housed downtown. I would be remiss, before I make any more comments, not to speak on our parks and our recreation. I can speak personally what the Domain Center has done for many youth in our community. I, along with about nine other churches, were in a basketball league called Athletes for Christ, and many of those games were played there at the Domain Center. As a member of the 100 Black Men of Greater Lafayette, I saw what the Martin Luther King Center did for many black youth in our inner city who joined scouting for the very first time.
Mr. Carlos, can you stick to the resolution?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, you may be getting to it, but we already discussed parks, I mean, recreation, so stick to the resolution.
Absolutely, absolutely. So we, we're here to support the removal of a symbol. And it may not seem like it, but assisting our black youth to overcome obstacles of crime, a school-to-prison pipeline, that's what that Jim Crow statue stands for. It's a mindset. So connecting those dots there. We celebrate the life of Congressman John Lewis, who fought what that statue continued to stand for. And he's known as, with the phrase of, get into good trouble. Moving that statue, for some, is some good trouble. It shook things up. And I know what, for myself, getting into good trouble, it causes that, to have to move that statue. When I moved to Lafayette from Washington, D.C., there was a show on Akkadiana Open Channel called The Klan in Akkadiana. And the host of that show actually wore a Ku Klux Klan robe. At that time, I passed the Diawmani Temple, and we partnered with the Nation of Islam, NAACP, and by working together, we got that show off the air. That was back in 1993. I can see that, as Ms. Swanson talked about, how our struggle has changed. We not only see blacks working together for social change, but with the death of George Floyd, and the Black Lives Matter movement, many instances, there were more whites at protests than blacks. So we've seen change. So I'm proud to, and I stood at our own Black Lives Matter rally with our Mayor President, Josh Gillery, who I stand with today in support of moving this statue, so that it is placed in a more appropriate location. I'd like to thank Fred Prajean, and all the members of Move the Mindset who have worked so hard to make sure that we continue with our good trouble to make Lafayette a much better place. I support the movement of that statue. Thank you.
Marybel Deetz?
Hi. Thank you. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. My name is Marybel Deetz. So it's Professor Marybel Deetz. I'm a professor of medieval history at LSU, though I've lived here, not native to Louisiana. I've lived in Louisiana for 23 years, raised my children here in Louisiana. And Liz Ebert, you're my rep where I live. And I'm first here because I'm part of Fred's Move the Mindset, and I want to thank him for all the work that he's done. And I sort of was thinking I was going to talk about that question that you asked, Representative Lewis, about, well, isn't it getting rid of history? And here, as a historian, I was going to say, no, that's not what history's about. But since that's already happened, I thought instead, I wanted just to reiterate that I completely support this effort. And I was very pleased that you decided to be influenced by Move the Mindset to back this. But also, I really hope that your eyes have been opened to everything that's gone on this evening, because it's all related. This is the history of Louisiana, and we've got to realize this. It's the history of our country. And recently, there has been a frightening rise in white supremacy. And it's not something of the past. It's now something of today. And I was a little put off in looking at your video statement, where you seemed to say that things going on in the nation, it's so, it's horrible things going on in the nation, where it seems to me like we're starting to open our eyes to some of the things going on. And yes, it's good that we've all been very peaceful, and no one's taking ropes around Alfred's head to bring him down. But ideas like closing those three centers in the African-American community, and basically firing our police chief, all of these things are kind of connected together
Ma'am, can you stick to?
To the resolution about getting rid of the statue. But, Mr. Gillery, I really hope this has opened your eyes. Because I've been here since 5:00 today, as many of you have, and the crowds outside were unbelievable. And they stayed in the rain, they stayed in the sun. We've waited till the morning. But I really hope your eyes are opened. And I hope all, I think your eyes are all opened. But I think we'll see about Josh. But thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for that. My eyes are definitely wide open, and I hope everyone else's eyes are wide open in the fiscal cliff that we are facing. This is not a white or black issue. I look at the budget, and I see dollar signs. I've said my intent, live within our means, millage plus revenues, and maximize those dollars to serve as many people in this community as we possibly can. I submit my executive budget. The councils will do their job, and maybe, you know, but I'm confident we'll work this out. But my eyes are open, and I appreciate that.
Pastor Abram Freeman. I think he's not here. Marshall Broussard, I think he's not here. Bobby Rishard, he's not here. Jarvis Orsano? Oh, I'm so sorry. I didn't see him.
So just to be quite frank with you, I would have passed to respect your time. I think, I think the message has been delivered. But at least I would be thought of any other than supporting the resolution. That's where I'm standing, right? So I think it's very simple. We seek the thing that makes for peace. And I just pray God's mercy as we pursue that, right? Thank you so much.
Jarvis Orsano? John Bess?
I'll defer.
He'll pass. Jacqueline Cochran?
I'll defer as well.
Thank you. Francisco Crocco?
I guess I should say, good morning. I was watching the clock because I saw, actually it was Marjorie who pointed out to me that as we were meeting yesterday, the Alexandria City Council voted to remove a Confederate statue from its front of the courthouse. So they beat us to it. But we started sooner. So change of circumstance, that comes to mind here. And let me just say, I want to thank you, Mayor President Gillery, for the position you took to remove the statue. And I hope that the city council will support that resolution unanimously. I was here four years ago when a group called Y. Alfred brought the resolution, the original resolution, to remove the statue. Greg Davis had supported us in that. I was one of the co-founders of Y. Alfred. We actually had started organizing in 2015, which is when I discovered that statue for the first time. I'm new to Lafayette. Had moved here just then. And I learned very quickly that most people didn't know anything about that statue. Not a damn thing. I asked people what they thought it was, and they all thought, oh, that's the guy who founded the city. That was the most common thing that I heard. Of course, you know, I did a little internet research and found out very quickly who he was, and that he was related to the person who founded the city, but had nothing to do with that. Anyhow, I was here the week before the city council meeting in 2016. I think, Ms. Ebert, you were here, and Mr. Lewis, you were here for that. And Ms. Cook, I think you were here for that. But I was here the week before when the UDC showed up in full force with their attorney, Elaine Roy, and they announced this injunction. We didn't know anything about injunction. I was sitting in the back of the room with my cohort, who spoke at the council meeting the next week. So they announced this injunction, and then threatened to sue all the council members, anyone who dared to even vote, no matter how they voted. I remember that. It put a pall over the whole process. And of course, a week later, when we got to the council meeting, nobody said anything, right? So in a way, I feel like this is a giant do-over. Y'all get to have a do-over. How often do you get to have a do-over? I do this with my kids, you know, they like, they do something, they make a mistake, you know? We say, okay, you know what? We're just going to give you a second try on this, and we get to do it right. Now, I understand that four years ago, everyone was intimidated by the prospect of a lawsuit, right? And the injunction is still here, although I think, as Mr. Morrow pointed out, that injunction, its days are numbered. And the strategy that you've laid out, you know, I support very much. But we get to have a giant do-over here. And I just ask that we go into this with a unanimous vote. You know, I was looking at the vote at the Alexandria council meeting yesterday, and it was six people voted for it and one abstained. That abstention, man, he's going to regret that 10, 20 years from now. He's going to say, you know what? I should have voted for it. Forget political calculation. In 20 years from now, are you going to say that you were proud to have abstained or not voted to support a resolution to remove a statue that is obviously a symbol of hate? And I'm going to say, that statue actually has nothing to do with Alfred Mouton. That was part of an orchestrated political propaganda campaign conducted by the United Daughters of the Confederacy, who probably don't even care about Lafayette, because they were planting them all across the South, and even in some northern states, as they were purging the textbooks and replacing them with the lost cause narrative of the Civil War, saying things like slaves were happier back then. I mean, that's literally what the textbooks they were putting before councils and getting approved for school boards said, okay? So they saw this as a moment where they had won. Separate but equal was the law of the land, and now they were adorning the South with these statues. And they chose Confederate icons, local boys when they could. Sometimes, sometimes they just bought generic statues. I was actually told by a person who lives here that, I forget what town it was in Louisiana, had a statue, a Confederate statue, because they were in front of every courthouse, right? Because they got put everywhere during this time period. The same statue existed in Pennsylvania, but it was to celebrate the Union. It was the same statue. So people were actually profiteering off of selling these statues because they were, you know, plunking down so many of them all around the country as part of this campaign. So Mouton gets chosen, and unfortunately for them, they don't know about his war crimes and his vigilanteism. Or maybe they didn't, they didn't care, right? But the point is, there are many reasons why we should morally object to that statue. You know, whether it's what the person depicted in the statue did personally, which is objectionable. I remember seeing the 1860 census. Alfred Mouton had 11 slaves, and six of them were Alfred Mouton had 11 slaves, and six of them were children. Child slavery? Is that, you know, where would you like to put a owner of child slaves? What building should we put him in front of? You know what I mean? I mean, just think about that.
Sir, your time is...
I'm sorry. So, I ask that this be unanimous vote. This is our do-over moment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, you did great. I would like to commend the Mayor President for his stance, and I would like to hope for unanimous vote. And I also want to recognize that 100 years ago, hell, four years ago, it couldn't have happened, because we were afraid, as most black people have been in the South for about 400 years, terrified that you would be burnt, lynched, beat up, violated, have your kids taken from you, sued, amongst many other horrible things that used to happen to people just for doing their best to stand up and be human. Another reason we couldn't do it, I look at my children, and I have children ranging from ages 22 to three months old, mind your business. And I think about the process of breaking them in to the mindset of slavery. And I think about white children 50 years ago, 100 years ago, three years old, four years old, playing with their friends that looked like me, seven years old, and then one day, they have to be broken in. See, racism cuts both ways. And the reason why people that looked like Ms. Cook and St. Abear and Nakkan, Josh, I'm not going to do it. The reason why they haven't been able to fully express themselves as human beings is because they were cut down in their youth, just as slaves were. It's a knife that cuts both ways, because when you look at a child and tell the child, "Listen, you are not going to play with him or you're not going to play with her because of this reason," and the child doesn't understand, and sneaks off like most children do, like I did, and goes to play with their counterparts. Did you know that white children were beaten just as mercilessly as the slave children for playing with black kids? They were terrified in their own homes because they could not be themselves. God forbid, a young white kid was in love with a black kid. They could not be themselves. And it's something I've thought about for a long time. Yes, slavery was horrible for people that looked like me, but it was just as horrible for people that looked like you, because you couldn't be yourself either. And anytime anyone gets in the way of you being yourself, that is racism. And the descendants of slave owners had their own form of racism and hell that they had to live through. I've talked to an old person, an 80-year-old white guy, who told me how he was beaten mercilessly by his mom, his dad, his brothers. Everybody in the community used to gang up on him and beat him until he began to hate black people and blamed them for all of his beatings. And it's a different thought sometimes in the South to think about the mindset of white people, because we feel like, well, black people were the only ones that got messed over, but that's not true. Generation after generation has lived in fear of a cycle that just perpetuates itself for greed, for economics, for things that don't matter when compared to humanity. I want to encourage this council to do the right thing. Make your mark on history tonight. Let's see what it's going to be. Are you going to remain the scared children of racism, black or white? Or are you going to be the adults and gather the intestinal fortitude that it takes to simply be yourself? Thank you.
Ms. Cook.
I'm going to wait to the end. Not now, just at the end.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Lavier points on something that's going to resonate with everybody, should resonate with everybody, and that is fear. And I don't know, I wasn't here four years ago, and I definitely wasn't here in 1922, but I can tell you, I'm here in 2020, and it's whatever time it is in the morning, okay? So, we're not watching live, but there will be a replay of this. So, there's another demographic out there that may not be represented here today, and that are white Republicans. So, my, to my fellow white Republicans, you may have some fear, sure, but let not that fear, and I'm looking right in the camera, let not that fear drive you. Sure, there's a fear, "They're erasing history." No, we're not. One speaker said it, "We're making history right," maybe two or three people said it. Now, we can probably teach history appropriately. Maybe now we can do that. Another fear, "We're letting the mob control." I think there was a peaceful protest on another issue tonight. And I don't think there was any damage to the property, that's good. I don't think we're breaking, burning down things. So, to my fellow white Republicans, fear not this change, for this change is healthy. This is a community who is healing. There's a difference between putting up a statue and teaching history and a Jim Crow monument put up 60 years after someone died for one purpose, to intimidate an entire class of people. Do not be afraid, and if you are, overcome it.
Okay, I'd like the council and all of us to realize they have a few more speakers that's waiting on the line, so let's try to get through them before we make comments.
The next speaker, the next speaker is Asia Ayara. You may begin speaking.
Hi, council. My name is Asia Ayara, arrest of Lafayette, and I am in favor of Resolution Item 7 on the agenda to move the Mouton statue. I myself and others have worked tirelessly on petitions, plus long hours in the heat of the day protesting. We also had nice fittings, and citizens came over to find out our purpose. We explained we are not in favor of destroying the statue, but preserve it by placing it with other historical monuments. They believed us and agreed with the decision and took pictures with us. Please consider this plea. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next caller. Mr. Tealy, you may begin speaking.
Hello, my name is Will Tealy. I live in City District 2. Councilman Andy Nakkan represents me, so thank you to him, and thank you to everyone on the council. I would like to speak in support of the resolution to move the Mouton statue off of the taxpayer-funded land where it currently resides. Communities have a right to define themselves, and I believe this statue no longer reflects the citizens of Lafayette in 2020. And here are the reasons why I believe the statue should be moved. First, the statue was constructed by the Daughters of the Confederacy, placed in front of the City Hall building at the time during the Jim Crow era of our history. The statue is obviously a clear message of racism and white supremacy to all of Lafayette's black citizens. This is abhorrent, and we have an opportunity now, here in 2020, to correct that tremendous error in judgment from nearly 100 years ago. Second, the statue also damages our competitiveness in the marketplace. When businesses are determining whether or not to locate the Lafayette, Louisiana, why on earth would we greet them with a statue of a Confederate slave-owning general in the heart of our downtown? Talk about throwing the worst part of our history in their face, front and center, and then putting it on a pedestal as if it's something we're proud of. Third, the argument that moving the statue is causing history to be lost is laughable. There is no statue to the War of 1812 in our city, but people still know about it. There's no statue to Abraham Lincoln in our city, but people still know he was our 16th president. Why does the existence of a statue, or the lack of an existence of a statue, determine whether or not people understand if it happened in history or not? Fourth, if it helps some of our councilmen and councilwomen get on board with this resolution, I wouldn't mind if there was an amendment proposed to include some language asking the Lafayette Parish School Board to teach the story of General Mouton, both good and bad, as part of their curriculum, so that way, nobody, nobody can make an argument that any history was lost. Fifth, just two and a half weeks ago, our nation celebrated the Fourth of July. It's a wondrous holiday where we celebrate the founding of our nation from back to 1776. Do you know who was a traitor to the United States? Do you know who took up arms against the United States of America? General Mouton. Why on earth would the United States of America have any statues glorifying men who tried to destroy the United States of America? And sixth, what good is the statue doing, seriously? For any statue to cause so much controversy and hurt, it is clearly not justifying its existence in our community. I say this to any council member who may want the statue to remain where it is. I ask you, since the statue is clearly causing so much hurt, maybe not to you specifically, but to other people in our city, why would you allow any statue to remain that was hurting people? Statues aren't worth that. Nothing is worth that. Thank you for the time to let me speak, and I hope this will be the first Lafayette City Council in 98 years to do the right thing. Thank you for letting me speak.
Mr. Berkeley, you may begin speaking.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Dr. Ishvan Bachar. I'm a professor at UN Lafayette in the Department of History, Geography, and Philosophy. Many people who favor keeping the Mouton statue in its current location like to appeal to some nebulous sense of history. However, right now, let's consider two concrete facts. George Washington during the Revolutionary War claimed, determined that neither citizens nor prisoners of war should be mistreated by US forces. I have a citation, if you'd be interested. Yet exactly this statute was violated on numerous times and occasions by Mouton during the Civil War. For example, writing in November 1st, 1862, Captain Silas Glismore described how Mouton's forces had, and I'm quoting here, "A first duty to shoot Negro condemned to death by a court martial for attempting to pass through our lines to enemy. The execution was consummated on banks of the Tesh in the presence of several hundred Negroes who were working on the fortification near Miss Mead's sugar house," end quote. From these two historical facts, we conclude that it was a racist, and B, Mouton was a war criminal, and C, Mouton was a terrorist. Furthermore, he was clearly a bully. On these grounds alone, it seems highly inappropriate that this likeness should stand in a prominent place in downtown Lafayette, unless, of course, Lafayette wishes to condone such things. A while ago, I served Lafayette Consolidated Government with Freedom Act, Eshen Act request concerning the Mouton statue. On doing this, I learned that city taxes, which I pay, were used to maintain the statue and the grounds around it. This is not a use of tax dollars, which I'm exactly thrilled about. However, this request also revealed the city had previously considered developing the land around the statue into something called Mouton Plaza. Incredibly, the proposal even included a comparison between the proposed plaza and the Eiffel Tower in Paris. I suggest the council look up this proposal. It's shocking. The very idea of this development is utterly mad. However, while the statue remained in its current location, misguided plans like this along with the cost associated with time of city employees will remain a possibility. I moved to Lafayette in July of 1996. Since I've been here, I've entertained many visitors from both out of town and out of this country, in fact, most of them out of this country. Many are naturally interested in seeing around town. I've set to death of having to launch into some fulsome apology for the Jim Crow era statue and the prominent land it occupies. A typical reaction came to my daughter. When she first visited, aged 14, when she saw the statue, she asked, and I'm quoting here, "What the hell is that? Why is it here?" If that is a reaction to the statue illicit from a Canadian teenager, imagine how the statue looks to people from elsewhere and the message it conveyed about the city of Lafayette. For these reasons, I strongly urge you to support removing the Mouton statue. It's an abomination. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Five more. Next speaker is Dr. Carolyn French. Dr. French, you may begin speaking.
My name is Carolyn French. My professional credentials include a master's degree in history from Northeast Louisiana University Monroe and a doctoral degree in historical geography and anthropology from Louisiana State University in Baton Rouge. I've been a citizen of Lafayette for 35 years, a citizen of Louisiana, and a citizen of the South for my entire life. I feel compelled to speak tonight, not as an authority, but as a compassionate citizen who is unwilling to accept the continuation of a culture of cruel, unconscious bias of racism. We must support the resolution to move the statue of General Muton from city property and as a test, possibly to the Alexander House Museum. We don't want to whitewash history, but we need not flaunt those parts of it that are so deeply offensive to our neighbors and our friends. We recognize the painful parts of our past, but we don't need to celebrate them. We accept our actions that have been divisive and cruel, but we do not glorify those actions. All citizens deserve respect, and everyone who pays city taxes to support city property must not feel disrespected by symbols on that property of a past that they find reprehensible. I implore you to do whatever is legally necessary to move the statue of General Alfred Muton, and I would suggest, possibly to the Alexander Muton House Museum. Alfred Muton was the grandson of the man who is acknowledged as the founder of Lafayette, Jean Muton, and he was the one who built the Muton House. And it was also the home of General Muton's father, Alexander Muton, the night the governor of our state. I want to paraphrase the words of Kenneth Broussard, as he was quoted in a recent article in the Daily Advertiser. Let each of us deepen the compassion in our own hearts, and let us listen and hear more deeply what is just, what is fair, what is right. Let us recognize the areas of unconscious bias within us. Let us acknowledge our history of racism, and let us move on to bring about changes as we pray for harmony and for peace. Thank you.
Next speaker, Jarrett Eubanks. Mr. Eubanks, you may begin speaking.
Yes, so I wanted to talk tonight about why the statue needs to be moved, but I think that's mostly been covered. So I want to thank Josh for leading the way on this resolution, and I want to thank Andy for sharing a very personal perspective on this matter. And I've been blown away by all of the brilliant and compassionate speakers we've had tonight. I think it's become clear that this is a conversation now based in the deeply researched and deeply painful history of the statue. To me, it is so remarkable how different this conversation is compared to the one we had just a few years ago. I truly believe that the moral imperative was going to win out on this, and the statue would be removed, but also that dragging our feet on it would only sow more division and cause more harm to our community. It has en cleared the intention of the statue, and it is clearly a dark mark on the soul of our city. Additionally, it sends a message of stubborn and persistent racism to visitors, prospective residences, and businesses alike. Moving the statue isn't a one-stop fix to racism within our community, I think has been deeply displayed here tonight, but it is a symbol that we are ready to start working on it. The unified voices I've heard tonight have given me so much hope. I hope everyone tonight was inspired by this, because we have a lot of work ahead of us. Just asking respectfully that you all come together tonight unanimously, endorse the
No speakers opposed the resolution. Oh, the mics are back on.
Mr. Esq., I would like you to take meticulous notes of that, as we will ask the court to take judicial notice of the fact that no citizen called in or appeared in person to oppose this resolution. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Cook?
The mic's on.
The mic's on?
Oh, it is, just kidding. All right, thank you. I just, I just have very few things to say. First, I want to thank Fred Prejean. I do want to thank you, your approach to this, to this whole move the mindset has been very enlightening, very educational, and I respect, you know, everything you've done to open our eyes to what exactly Alexander Muton stood for. I want to thank also Dr. Swanson. It was your presentation early on in this that I watched shortly after we were elected, and that really, again, opened my eyes. I was kind of like Andy in that I grew up here, but, I mean, I'm almost ashamed to say the statue, it was the meeting grounds at Mardi Gras. Met at that statue, it didn't even have a name, met at that statue so we could go to the carnival. I mean, it was not something that, you know, we really knew enough about. And so when this came before us four years ago, it really, it caught us, it caught me off guard in terms of what do we do with this? So I'd like to think of this as not necessarily a do-over, I would almost like to think of this as a graduation. We have been educated, we have learned, and I do think that now I have, personally have a, you know, I feel more comfortable and more educated in terms of casting a vote in favor of the mayor's resolution. So I thank you all for that.
Mr. Lozort?
I will simply say, see my statement from a month ago. Thank you.
I would just like to ask all colleagues to support this resolution. That's it.
Let's go.
Call for the vote.
Let's go. Call for the vote, please.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five? City resolution? City resolution?
No fair. I stayed the whole time.
Please read, Jeremy.
City Resolution 26, 2020. A resolution of the Lafayette City Council ordering and calling a special election to be held in the city of Lafayette, state of Louisiana, to authorize the rededication of sales and use taxes therein, making application to the state bond commission in connection therewith, and providing for other matters in connection therewith.
Motion by Mr. Annie Nockens, second by Ms. Cook. Counsel discussion?
And as you can see, the screen went out again, so we'll go to old-fashioned, just reading and old-fashioned voice vote, just to keep the meeting rolling.
Counsel discussion? No. Okay, public comments? No. Call for the vote.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved.
Okay, item number nine has been deferred indefinitely. Item number 10 has deferred indefinitely. Okay, now we're moving, okay, reports in our discussion item, item number 11, deferred until August 4th by the authors. Okay, now it's time to move forward toward ordinance for final adoption. This is a public hearing, and blue sheets are available for anyone wishing to address the council. The five-minute rule does apply. Jeremy, please read 12.
City Ordinance 56, 2020.
Thank you.
An ordinance of the Lafayette City Council declaring the building or structure located at 1200 South College Road, Lafayette, Louisiana, owned by Kimnich B. Din, to be dilapidated and dangerous to the public welfare, and ordering the condemnation of same.
Motion by Mr. Nockens, second by Liz Ebert. Counsel discussion? Nope. Ms. Williams, public comments?
Yes, we do have Kim Din and To Din. You could come forward to speak if you want to speak on it.
I don't know about y'all, but I'm so tired. I hope y'all get paid for this, but I'm here because y'all requested that I be here. So if you have any questions for me, please ask away. In the beginning, I know that the, the house that we bought, we intended to buy it for my kids, but I don't know if they still want it or not. But anyway, the house got flooded in 2016, and during that time, we also had another house that got flooded. So we didn't have the resources to do anything with it. We were told to, that we had to de-gut it, so we de-gut it. And then after that, we were told to board all the windows and everything to keep everyone safe. So we did as, we complied as was expected of us. And then now, we are told that our house could be condemned. So I would like to know the reasons for it, and because it's stressing me out. It's been stressing me out a lot, because I feel like we bought a house, we saved up, and we finally tried to buy a house for my kid, for their future. And we always been like, you need to do this, you need to do that. So we complied, we did what we, we were told to do, and now we have to deal with this I'm sorry, but I've been here since 6 o'clock. I'm tired, and I'm stressed out. We got a lot of, you know, people asking to buy our place, and I don't know if that's the reason why we, our names are always brought up, and, you know, we always been like, we need to do this, we need to do that, to the place. So, I mean, I'm here. Y'all tell me what I need to do.
Ms. Ebert, I mean, Ms. Cook has something she would like to talk to you.
I was going to ask Randy to maybe come up. What, are you hoping to rebuild on this piece of property?
Yes, we are.
Now, do you have, I mean, do you know, you know it floods a lot, so you would have to make...
Yes. I know that I was told that I have to elevate the, the area, so what we plan to do is, because the house is a two-story house, and so the bottom, we have to elevate it, but it'll cost too much to elevate. So what we're going to do is maybe just have that bottom part as a garage, and then just remodel the upstairs, and of course, the downstairs has to be made into a garage, parking. And...
I've seen that. We had a couple houses in our neighborhood, bless you, do the same thing. So I've seen that done, yes.
That's what we plan to do. And before, we didn't have the funds to do it, but now that we do, we, we need to get the permit, in which I have tried today, and I've tried several times before that, but because the office is closed, so I couldn't do anything about it. And then this came up, so I tried today again, and I had to call so many people and wait. You know, you call, they don't pick up, you leave messages, you wait for them to call back, and then they refer you to someone else, and that's what I've been dealing with today.
I know, it's been crazy with, with everything closed and not open all the time. So, Randy, can you help me out in terms of how we could maybe meet somewhere in the middle here with this?
Yeah, the house, it's a repetitive loss by FEMA, so they do have to raise the house, six, seven, eight feet. We don't know exactly, but it does have to be raised. If y'all would vote to condemn it, for them to repair it, they would have to come in with a bond, cash bond, surety bond.
Right.
$50,000. If y'all would defer it or anything, they could get a permit. Now, we have it blocked for the permits to where they would have to come see us. She could bring a plan in, get the permits to see what, what exactly she would need to, to do.
What's the timeframe on a condemnation if we basically vote to condemn it tonight?
If you vote to condemn it tonight, she has two weeks to provide a surety bond or a cash bond. If she provides that with the contract stating what needs to be done, then she could repair it. Now, according to the ordinance, it states three, three months to repair it, but I think it would take a little bit longer, but we would work with them.
Okay. So are you, are you, are you comfortable with that? If we, if it was still voted on tonight as a condemnation, you would still have two weeks to get a permit and basically pay, pay the, pay the bond?
And it'd be $50,000 cash bond or it's a surety bond.
We did not save up enough for that. And then, you know, with my husband, he got laid off three months ago, so we were going to do, you know, the renovation on the top, and the bottom, we're not going to, because it's, it's brick around, so I don't see why we have to, you know, spend that much money when we can just fix the top and be livable.
Have you got an estimate on fix, how much the talks, how much it will cost to fix the top?
Well, we, we saved up, you know, up to $25,000 right now, and that's what we were going to get the permit to do. And, and then as we progress, I guess, and start working on it, we'll see how much more money we would need to be, you know, put in it. But $50,000 is impossible.
How long have y'all not lived in that house, though?
We bought the house, I'm, I don't remember how long ago, but we were going to fix it up for my kids, like I said, but then the flooding happened, and then we were in the middle of other stuff, and we just didn't have the funds to do what we need to do. And so we have to save up, and then now all of a sudden, you know, my husband got laid off three months ago. So we would like to be able to fix up the house. laid off three months ago, so we would like to be able to fix up the house, and maybe one of my kids would be able to, we want them to be, the reason we bought the house is because one of my kids were gonna be doctors, you know, in the field of doctors, and in that area, we would like for them to be able to work with other doctors, being the central of, you know, Lafayette General and stuff, but...
How ma, how many times, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, how many times you said this was a repeat?
It's considered repetitive loss, my FEMA. I know for sure, at least three times. I gotta believe it's a lot more, ever since the house was built.
I mean, yeah.
Do you know how long the flooding, how many times it has flooded in that?
Personally, I've seen it flood about three times. Now, I gotta believe it's flooded a lot more than that.
I've seen it, yeah, several times, yeah.
I didn't know that.
I would almost rather, I mean, this is just me, I would rather you not spend your money on, on fixing that up and come around the corner into Bendell Gardens, that's right by the hospital, you could probably find a house in there, so, I mean, there's other, if you're looking for something around the hospital, there's other options. I just, I would hate to see you put, and, I mean, honestly, $25,000 to, to, you know, build up, I don't, I don't know, I don't, that's not gonna cover it, of course, and I don't know, I'd hate for you to put money into that, and by the time you're finished, it's gonna flood again, so...
Well, you know, my husband was talking about building a wall, you know, because the house is, is, is a brick home, and we're building a wall, I don't know how, all that detail, but my husband can come up and talk to you about it, but I think being, it being a brick house, if, if it's surrounded at the bottom, even with water, if it's like, you know how the other houses, they built on a, on a ledge, that they just lived on, you know, on the top, on a pier? But anyway, you can do that, and it's not gonna affect at the bottom.
Right, right.
Because there'll be a parking garage.
Now, where will you park your cars, down there, though? Then, so they're gonna flood, right?
Well, whenever, if it happens, we'll, probably won't be there.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah, I'm, it's a tough one here. I just, I, again, I would hate to see you put money into that piece of property anymore.
That's a chance that, that I want to take, because for my kids' future later, and then also, I don't know, I love fishing, I love the outdoors, and I love the way it is for, when I go there, it's very peaceful, and it's relaxing, and it's just a place for me to go and fish and de-stress, but this is stressing me out.
Yeah.
So sometimes I go there just to de-stress, yes.
All right, the only option, you know, we have, we have two options. We, basically, we, we move forward with condemnation, and there's a $50 bond that you have to come up with, and/or, I mean, if we move forward without doing that, you know, again, I've gotten a lot of complaints about that property, and I know that we all have, just because of, it's, it's, it's in dis-repair, and, you know, it's, I mean, I don't know what's, I don't know if anybody's down there that shouldn't be down there, you know, when you're not there, because do you live in Lafayette?
I do, I live in Scott.
You do, okay, okay. So that's, that's what, you know, that's, that's why it's come before us tonight, because we have had some complaints, several complaints about this, you know, the status of it, and I think the house next door, there was a house next door that was totally leveled.
They demolished that house next door.
I guess, again, based on the fact that they, they flooded all the time, too, so, you know, I can't, I, I'm not telling you what to do with your money or your property, but I, I, I mean, I'm trying not to.
That's the thing that I don't understand, is like, okay, I, we work hard, found money, and we, we see the property that we like, and we purchased it for, you know, intended for a future of our kids, and then I feel like I left Vietnam because of the communists, and I come over here, and I thought it was a land of freedom, and you buy the property, you work hard for it, you saved up, and you, you, you like it, you pay for it, and I work hard on, you know, we work hard all our lives. We don't try to take advantage of anyone, or use anyone, or be abused, but we feel like, sometimes we feel like we are target, because we, you know, Oriental, and I hate to say it, but...
Well, I, I don't, that's not where we're going with this, that's not, I don't think any of us are going in that direction with this. We do, we do this anywhere in the city, if there's a house that is in, in very much dis-repair, and it is in an area where there are other residents who are concerned about it, and so it's, it's in respect out of the whole, you know, the neighborhood, the area, and so, you know, that's, that's why it was brought to our attention, so I just, I feel like, you know, I'm sorry to do this, but I feel like we need to move forward with the condemnation, and if you can some, you know, if you have access, or you can get the bond money, we can, we can go forward from there, and you can continue to see, you know, how you can maybe improve that piece of property. But I feel like, you know, I, I think, I mean, I'm, I'm actually, you know, I'm asking for this condemnation for this piece of property, because again, I've had several requests to, to address this, this property, and it's, and it's been like this for quite a while, so, you know, I'm...
Condemn our property?
It's, yes, and I, and if you would talk to Mr. Randy, he, Mr. Vietor, he can, he can basically give you a little more information about it, and it's, I'm not, we're not coming with a bulldozer tomorrow to knock it down, that's not how that works, but he can talk to you about what options you do have moving forward, if you decide you want to make the improvements on the house.
Hi.
Okay, how much, how much would it buy the law, try to buy a house at dollars?
$50,000 cash bond or it's a surety bond, which is a certain percent.
So how, how, how many would you be putting for the law, like?
Yeah, I know, I know, I know. Uh, excuse me, Ms. Cook, also, you guys can have that conversation later, we just have to move forward, you can have that comment, unless Ms. Cook have anything else to discuss?
I have, I have nothing else to say, thank you.
Hold on a second, Mr. Nakan?
Thank you, Chairman Lewis. Ms. Din, I hate to be the bearer of bad news, but I want to ask Mr. Vietor some questions. This was, occurred in 2016 flood, so it's been there like that almost four years.
Yes.
It was a terrible situation, because that house was almost covered completely in water. I wouldn't doubt the second floor itself, the floor system, is it in good condition, Randy? Did you see the second floor?
Yes, I don't think it reached the second floor, but they did gut the whole, first floor.
Yes, pretty bad.
So it's just the studs.
Now, this is not a full two-story, this is a story and a half.
Full two-story.
It's a full two-story, so they have egress access and everything?
Yeah, they'd have to address that with their permits and, and...
Listen, I'm looking at the roof line and everything, I don't see any, any...
Right, I have to agree with you, yes.
...dormer windows or anything like that, they, you know, it'd be only gable windows, so for you to remodel this thing, to make it livable and bring it up to code, would be a lot of money.
How much do you think?
I don't know, but it would take a lot. I, I'm not an architect, but I'm looking at this house here, and I don't see any, any, any living space that would be considered code equivalent, where you have to have egress to get out with windows, doors, et cetera, I mean, you just can't build in an attic and call it living space, and that's what I'm looking at at this house here. You have gable ends, but that's it, it looks like, you know, and you have to put a kitchen up there, you'd have to put everything up there, and the brick structure is not, the brick is not structural, it's the wood that's structural, the brick is a facade, it's like the skin on your hand. So, I mean, it may not even be really safe to move forward with this. I, I think it could be an investment, as Ms. Cook said, that you would regret trying to put money into. The land is still good, I mean, like you said, it's a beautiful piece of property, I think probably the best move for you guys is to get rid of the house, and you could probably, I don't know what Randy and them are gonna charge to demo it, but there are people out there that could do it probably fairly inexpensively, I would think under $10,000. Keep the property and build another house on, on pilings, and you have something, you still have the land there, I think that would be more feasible than trying to do something with what you have here, so I'm with Ms. Cook, I think we just need to move forward with the condemnation, and, and if y'all come up to a resolution, that'd be the best thing down the road for you, but that house was bad, it really was, I hate to say it, but it was bad, I'm, I'm sorry you purchased it, and y'all are sitting on a piece of property like this, because it was a dream home for you, but it turned into a nightmare, and I apologize for that, it's just, it's, it's, it was a bad thing for you guys, I'm really sorry.
Okay, will we just go ahead and call for the vote on this? Call for the vote on this side?
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved. City Ordinance 58, 2020. An ordinance of the Lafayette City Council amending the fiscal year 1920 operating and capital budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government to provide for adjustments of revenue and appropriation estimates.
Motion and second, please. Motion by Ms. Ebert? Second by Ms. Cook. Finance has proposed an amendment to revise the deletion list of vacant position. I need a motion and a second from the council to amend. Motion by Mr. Annie Nakan, second by Ms. Liz Ebert. Counsel discussion? Ms. Williams, any public comments? Vote from the council to amend?
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
Motion to amend is approved.
Vote from the council to adopt the ordinance.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
Motion to adopt as amended is approved. City Ordinance 59, 2020. An ordinance of the Lafayette City Council suspending Ordinance 59, 2019, the conditional 2% pay increase structure for the municipal fire and police civil service employees of the Lafayette Police Department for the proposed fiscal year 2021 budget as a result of the economic downturn due to the COVID-19 pandemic.
Motion, motion by Mr. Glenn Lazar, second by Ms. Nanette Cook. Counsel discussion? We already discussed this at joint meeting. Ms. Williams, public comments? Vote to adopt the ordinance.
District five? District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved. City Ordinance 60, 2020. An ordinance of the Lafayette City Council amending the fiscal year 1920 operating budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by increasing revenues in the amount of $27,481 received from the Louisiana Commission on Law Enforcement authorizing the transfer of matching funds in the amount of $9,160 from Fund 101 and appropriating within the Lafayette Police Department.
Motion and second. Motion by Ms. Liz Ebert, second by Ms. Nanette Cook. Counsel discussion? Ms. Williams, any public comments? Need to vote to adopt the ordinance.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five? Motion to adopt is approved. City Ordinance 61, 2020. An ordinance of the Lafayette City Council amending the fiscal year 1920 capital budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by transferring $150,000 from the office renovations Phase II account within the Lafayette Police Department to purchase mobile field force equipment.
Motion by Mr. Glenn Lazar, second by Ms. Nanette Cook. Counsel discussion? None, Ms. Williams, public comments? Vote from the council to adopt the ordinance.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved. City Ordinance 62, 2020. An ordinance of the Lafayette City Council amending the fiscal year 1920 operations and maintenance budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government to make appropriations adjustments within the Communications Department.
Motion by Ms. Liz Ebert, second by Mr. Annie Nakan. Finance has proposed an amendment to adjust the submitted budget revision. Need a motion and a second from the council to amend. Motion by Mr. Nakan? Second by Mr. Glenn Lazar? Counsel discussion? Ms. Ebert?
My screen's not working, so you may need a...
Yeah, it's not, boot.
Question about this, in the information I read, Lowell, I saw you in the back, am I reading this correctly, that some of the expenses on legal fees are for that, for, are associated with external audits of LUS? Is that the forensic audit that we're going through, or is this a different audit? Whoever can answer this, fine, do you want to make glory lines?
It is for that, as well as for the other investigative audit that was being performed from the internal, from our city parish attorney, so it's both of them. I did speak to the forensic auditor last week, and they are getting very close to finishing and hope to have a draft very soon.
Okay, because that was gonna be my next question, was whenever I met with Josh Friday, he mentioned to me that he would get us an update on the forensic audit and where we are with that, so...
I knew that was coming with the budget amendment, so I, I called him up to discuss that with them, and so we hope to have that very soon.
So, as I was explaining to me, and I don't know if my fellow council members know this, is that we actually paid them, they were doing the job, then they asked for additional funds of, how much more did they ask for?
28. It still didn't reach the maximum of their original proposal, but we started off with 80, and then they came back with an additional 28, still remaining under their original.
Right, and, and the reason for that, is my understanding, is that they needed more time, they wanted to go back, I mean, if somebody wants to speak for me, they can, but it was my understanding, they wanted to go back further, after finding some, some things, they wanted to make sure to do a thorough search, so they need to go back further, which costs more money and a longer deadline, is pushing back that deadline.
That, that is absolutely correct, but I, I must also say that COVID did play a role in it, in them not being able to travel here for the first month or so.
That's true.
But they have been back and forth several times, I'm not a gatekeeper, they have direct access to all the employees, when I spoke to them, they, last week, they said they had one more interview they would like to do, they didn't know if they were able, they were gonna be able to get it done, so I'm not sure who that was with, you know, I didn't ask, but...
Okay, I, I would like a better, I'd like them to nail down at least soon, what does soon mean? Does soon mean tomorrow? Does soon mean in a week, two weeks?
He said two to three weeks, he hoped to have a draft report.
Okay, and I mentioned to the mayor that I'd like for him to present it to the council publicly, that way the public can, can hear the findings and learn the findings with us, so...
And just, just for clarity, you, and I agree with this, if, if this is what you're saying, the actual auditor, I think everybody would benefit if the actual auditor would do so.
Absolutely.
I don't know if he could come two or three weeks, but, but let's, we can at least present to the council something, you know, an update, and then let's coordinate with him, I wholeheartedly support this, I think, look, everybody can ask questions, this is the institute, this is why, I mean, we wanted them to look at everything, hey, we can, we can ask the questions.
I mean, I'd like him ideally here as soon as possible.
And I've never actually gone through this process before, so in my mind, I'm wondering if we would want the, the final report ahead of time, so that way, when he does come for his presentation?
Sure.
You can, you'd be more prepared to ask questions?
Absolutely. No, I would, I would appreciate that, I think my fellow council members would as well, so just put him on notice, that, that is our expectation, so he is prepared, and I imagine it's not hard to buy a plane ticket right now, so maybe easier for him to travel, harder for him to travel, I don't know, so, thank you so much for the update.
Yeah, they're all in the state, so they're not flying anywhere, but I guess, just with the circumstances.
All right, so right now, we're anticipating two to three weeks. Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
Mr. Lazar?
Since we, since we on the issue of the audit and those related issues, I know one of the issues had to do with some, some emails. Do we have any? And there's, Mayor, this is Director of the Year.
Yes, sir.
I know one of the issues was some, some emails that, that we allegedly couldn't, couldn't find, I guess. I was contacted by somebody that said that, that asked me, have we been able to, if I was aware of whether or not we had been able to locate those emails that had purportedly disappeared on some server somewhere?
Right, thank, thank you, Councilman, so it's two separate issues, and I'm, and I may not have caught the first part of your question, so the forensic audit is looking in the rearview mirror from the financial standpoint, Director Tubbs will follow up with the auditor to get us an update for two weeks, and then give him notice, as Councilwoman Ebert said, to come and present to council. The emails, the city parish attorney, if you're watching back there, Greg... The emails, the city parish attorney, if you're watching back there, Greg, if you could, you may need to walk back up here just to answer these questions, but that deals with the potential criminal aspect of this. It's my understanding that it's still in the investigatory process, so I personally don't have an update. I kinda want to maintain that degree of separation to not interfere with the investigation, but Greg may have an update.
Okay, Ms. Williams, any public comments?
He's coming. Did you need an answer?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just had some questions on the emails.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Councilman. Can you repeat the question?
Yeah. One of the, one of the allegations that brought this whole thing on was that there were some emails that purportedly couldn't be found that covered a certain period of time. And someone contacted me, someone from the media contacted me, and asked me if I had had any up, if I had heard the rumor that the purported missing emails had been found.
We don't know that all the emails have been found. There is a Barracuda email device here that archives our emails for both LCG and LUS. And then they installed a Barracuda software solution at LUS, and there were some emails uploaded into that. Plus, there was, there were what are called PST, which are backup email files on Mr. Huvall's computer that were also uploaded into a server. We now have all of those. The numbers do not appear to have the huge discrepancy that was missing, I think it's 2011, and that's all been outlined and provided to the district attorney.
So the, so the short answer is some of those purported emails have been located?
Some or all, we don't know for sure, because there's no way to put a file back together.
Okay.
They're coming from many places.
So it's a possibility that, that we're able to obtain all of them?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
All right, thank you.
Public comments? You'd need a vote from the council to amend.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
Motion to amend is approved.
Need a vote from the council to adopt the ordinance.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
Motion to adopt as amended is approved. City ordinance 63, 2020. An ordinance of the Lafayette City Council declaring the intersection improvement, Pinhook Road at University Avenue project a public necessity and authorizing the acquisition of the necessary rights of way, immovable property, and other property rights requisite to the construction of said project either on an amicable basis or through the use of the expropriation process if necessary.
Motion and second, please. Motion by Ms. Cook, second by Ms. Ebert. Council discussion. Public comments? Vote from council to adopt the ordinance.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved.
Item number nineteen has been deferred until September first as short-term rental. Okay, move over to introductory ordinance, please, Jeremy. I need, I need a second, but I need the first, the motion first. Man, Ms. Andy Nakin make the motion, second by Ms. Cook.
All of one.
All of one. Jeremy, please read item number twenty.
City ordinance 65, 2020.
All right.
An ordinance of the Lafayette City Council amending the fiscal year 1920 operating budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by increasing revenues in the amount of one hundred fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred sixty-four dollars received from the Department of Justice, Office of Justice Programs, and appropriating within the Lafayette Police Department.
Comments from the public? Okay, I need a motion. So motion by Mr. Andy Nakin, second by Ms. Lizzy Ebert. Council discussion. None. Ms. Williams, public comments? Vote from the council to introduce the ordinance.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four? Motion to introduce is approved.
Adjourned to city council meeting.